Mayor Walker, want me to read us out?
Yes.
I move this council certified by recorded vote to the best of each council member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Second.
Ms. Thomas, will you take vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Mine is one thing that I did get an email during that time about the CRHA winning the Governor's Byburn Communities Grant, and I did make that announcement during the session.
Okay. Ms. McGill? Yes, with that exception. And Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Give me just a second, and let me get my... All right, so I call this meeting to order. We are going to take a quick moment of silence. Ms. Thomas, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Payne? Mr. Payne?
Here.
Mr. Snook?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
President.
Ms. McGill?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
All right, next we have the agenda approval. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, Ms. Thomas, would you take vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Okay, and any announcements? And does someone have the tax deadline announcement?
Mayor Walker, I do. Give me one second while I find it amongst... So this is the announcement, the City Treasurer and Commissioner of the Revenue would like to remind Charlottesville residents that the deadline for payment of personal property tax and real estate taxes is June 19th. The lobby of City Hall will be open on a temporary basis the remainder of this week for payments only from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for those customers needing to make in-person payments. Proper social distancing practices will be observed and a face covering will be required for entry to the building. The remainder of City Hall is still closed to the public at this time. The city is still encouraging taxpayers to take advantage of online and phone options whenever possible for conducting city business. Taxpayers experiencing a financial hardship should contact the City Treasurer's office to see what payment arrangements are possible based on the individual circumstances. Jason Vandiver, City Treasurer.
Are there any other announcements? No? Any recognitions? Nope? All right. And Counselor Hill, will you do the board and commission appointments?
Yes. I move that council appoint the following to its boards and commissions. The Board of Architectural Review, Sherri Lewis. The Charlottesville Area Transit Advisory Board, Jonathan Krappko, Connor Kurtz, Anson Parker, and Rabia Anne Sandage. The Charlottesville Economic Development Authority, James Coffin and Olivia Gabay. The Citizen Transportation Advisory Committee, Lucas Bean, Joseph French, and Ray Heron. The Historic Resources Committee, Alisa Diamond, Genevieve Keller, Jelaine Schmidt, Rachel Lloyd, Philip Varner, and Robert Woodside. The JABA Advisory Council on Aging, LD Perry and Christina Reese. The JABA Board for the Aging Board of Directors, Richard Brew and Elaine Phillips. The Human Rights Commission, Jessica Harris and Laura Keppley. Jefferson Area Community Criminal Justice Board, Hosea Mitchell. Jefferson Madison Regional Library Board, Kathy Johnson Harris. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Jeffrey Frazier. The Measurements and Solutions Group, Marsha Wilds. The Place Design Task Force, Andrew Fondeschein Foundation. The Piedmont Family YMCA Board of Directors, Tom Boe. The Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood Task Force, Pat Lloyd and Audrey Oliver. The Social Services Advisory Board, Shayla Givens. And... I know we had one more on that. Right, that's one that was reapplying. I will go back to that.
Catherine Galanosa?
Yes.
Catherine Galanosa.
Could you say that one more time?
Catherine Galanosa.
Catherine Galanosa, Social Services Advisory Board, I apologize, there's a lot of papers. The Tree Commission, Emily Cohen Miller, Jeff Jennings, Jeff Pacelli, Lynn Rush, Mark Rylander, and Peggy Van Yerres. I believe that is all of them.
I'd second the motion.
Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes, but now I have to make another motion because I realized where the page I was missing.
Okay.
So I also have to move that council appoint the following to these boards and commissions. Piedmont Virginia Community College Board, Pam Deguzman and Janet Morrow. The Region 10 Community Services Board, Helena Banks. And the Sister Cities Commission, Michael Grinnell, Stella Matteoli, Elizabeth Smiley, and Adrian Ward.
I'll second that motion also.
One more, sorry. The Tree Commission also has, did I say Marcus Allen Hoffer earlier when we did the other Tree Commissions? Apologies.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because I think there was only five mentioned.
Right, that's the additional one.
I'll second it as amended.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
All right, next we have the consent agenda, Ms. Thomas, could you read it, please?
Okay. Minutes from May 27th and May 29th, closed meetings. Number three is appropriation of supplemental state funding for the Children's Services Act, $880,522.88, second reading. Four, appropriation, Department of Social Services, additional funding for adoption assistance, $625,000, second reading. Five, appropriation of CARES Act funding designed to provide emergency assistance for Charlottesville area transit and jaunt, total funding $7,143,582. CAT receiving $5,357,686, and jaunt $1,785,896, second reading. Six, appropriation, maintenance vehicle insurance reimbursement, $40,706.32, first of two readings. Seven, appropriation, 2020 Energy and Water Management Program Fund, $1,429.47, first of two readings. Eight, appropriation, grant award from Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, $242,770, first of two readings. Nine, appropriation, Bureau of Justice Assistance Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program, fiscal year 2020, $80,781, first of two readings. Ten, ordinance, Taxi Cab Driver Ordinance Amendment, second reading. Eleven, ordinance, ordinance amendment to modify deadlines, modify public meeting and public hearing practices and procedures to address continuity of operations associated with COVID-19 pandemic, and this may pass, maybe pass with a forfeits vote on the first reading.
All right, thank you. Mr. Will, or is there anyone who signed up for public comment?
Mayor Walker, we do have people raising their hand to speak during the consent agenda, and we'll start with Neil Williamson. Neil, you're on with City Council, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, members of City Council. My name's Neil Williamson, and I serve as the president of the Free Enterprise Forum, a privately funded public policy organization focused on local government in Charlottesville and surrounding localities. Tonight, number 11 on your consent agenda is a limited opening of applications for neighborhood development services. Across the Commonwealth, we're seeing localities are finding ways to process all applications. From Augusta County to Virginia Beach, development, the planning departments are getting the job done and keeping their communities moving forward. Albemarle never stops accepting applications. Green County with the Planning Department of 3.5 full-time employees is accepting in applications every day. I know how much time each member of council has spent on the housing crisis. I've been in many of the meetings. Right now, you have housing applications sitting in the queue and not being accepted by neighborhood development services. I think that's a crime. I'm hopeful that you can pull this from the consent agenda and discuss why it is that Greene County and Augusta County and Albemarle County and other places can move forward with the work of government, which is these application processes, and why Charlottesville can't. I'm really hopeful that this will eventually come to more housing everywhere for everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is JoJo Robertson. JoJo, you're on the City Council, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to talk tonight about the Social Service Department within the city of Charlottesville. A very dear friend of mine, African-American friend, we've been friends almost 20 years, took in her, two of her grandchildren that were mixed, because the mother of the children...
JoJo, is this related to the appropriations for social services?
No. Oh, yeah, oh, wait, didn't you, didn't you... I heard that you, I missed part of Heather's speech when she was talking about social services.
Okay, so...
Right now? Is this public comment? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have not ever done this with my phone, with you all, so like, I don't, I raised my hand, and I guess it went up at the wrong time.
Okay, yeah, that'll be adjusted a little bit.
I'm so sorry, this is all... Okay, thank you, I'll wait.
And as Mayor Walker said, this is for public input on the consent agenda, you can click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar, or press star nine on your telephone. And next up, we have William Elder. Bill, you're on the City Council, you've got three minutes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to voice my opinion tonight and my concerns. I am also here tonight to voice concerns about the process of licensing being down at the Charlottesville Police Department service window. Last time I was here, I was talking about what the problem is. The problem is, is that the window at the Charlottesville Police Department is not accessible to an essential business during the virus. Tonight, I would like to focus on the why. The reason that we need the window open is because as a taxi service here in Charlottesville, we offer services to folks that are in need to go to medical transportation, for doctor's appointments, cancer treatments, dialysis in and around Charlottesville. We provide services to folks that do not want our services, they need our services. Another reason that we need the window open is that during the virus, we had numerous people that lost their jobs that we were offering a solution to that problem, and we could not complete the process because the window was closed. Also, I would like to point out that at City Hall, contractors that are applying for permits, builders that are providing permits, zoning, plumbers, developers, anybody that is accessed to the Charlottesville City Hall has access five days a week. It's either 8:00 or 9:00 a.m. to 4:00, 4:30 p.m. The taxi industry is only allowed three days per week, certain times of the day, 7:30 in the morning till 12:30 in the afternoon. We think that this should match all permits that are given through the City Hall.
Did we lose them?
No, that is all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else?
We do. Mayor Walker, next up is Ashley Davies. Ashley, you've got three minutes.
Evening, Mayor Walker and City Councilors, my name is Ashley Davies. I am the current Chair of Cadre, the Charlottesville Area Development Roundtable. We're a group of approximately 134 area professionals and property owners, and I wanted to echo what Neil Williamson said earlier regarding item 11 on the consent agenda. We respectfully request that you reconsider this item and urge NDS staff to accept all development applications for review. We know that the virus has had an extreme impact on everyone involved, but we feel like three months is sufficient time to adapt the review procedures and make sure that everyone can be safe along the way. We feel like the current proposal by staff to accept some minor administrative applications is a step in the right direction, but it does fall short of what's truly necessary. I echo Mr. Williamson's comments about the housing crisis, but we also are in a budget shortfall, and so we think it's also important to recognize that new development and redevelopment greatly contribute to the city's tax base, and the longer we wait to reopen, that's going to have a negative ripple effect on our community and all of the projects that could be in the pipeline now. We have polled localities and planning districts around the state, we know of no other jurisdictions that have placed the type of moratorium on new development that Charlottesville has, so thus, we don't think that there's a reason to continue such a moratorium. We know that staff and City Council and Planning Commission are now all meeting safely, virtually. Public engagement can and does happen every day in the city, and we've had great success with that, and are even finding ways to use these new platforms to reach a broader audience and create new forms of engagement for people that really weren't able to come to in-person meetings. So I think there's a lot of effective creative solutions that are working out there. So because the technology is available, we don't see any reason why new applications can't be processed. There shouldn't be any distinction from all development applications to just the administrative review, now that City Council, Planning Commission, and BAR are holding online meetings. So we ask you to pull that item for further discussion, and we hope that you'll direct staff to resume and accept and review all new development applications without limitation tonight. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Walker, next up is David Swanson, who's also signed up under Other Matters from the Public. So Mr. Swanson, just want to confirm that you want to talk about the consent agenda at this time?
I do not, and apologize, and let me know somehow when Community Matters is, thanks.
Yep, thank you. Mayor Walker, that concludes the people who have raised their hand.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion, any comments from council?
Well, I would like us to pull item 11 for discussion this evening. At the end of the agenda.
All right. So is there a motion for items 1 through 10?
Sure, I move that we adopt the consent agenda minus item 11, which will be discussed further at the end of the meeting. So it's items 2 through 10.
I second that motion.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Blair, we don't have to do anything differently, just to let that go to the last item on the agenda?
No, Mayor Walker, it'll be after the current item number 14.
All right, next we have the City Manager's response to the Community Matters from the June 1st meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Council and the public. I don't have anything to report back from our last meeting, those items were covered, but I do want to bring up one thing, and that's pertaining to the number of emails that we received pertaining to defunding the police. I know that's become a national discussion, and I just wanted to be able to bring that to the council and talk about our plans in terms of moving forward, and then how do we want to proceed with that? And I know that's a larger discussion beyond my response time, but I just wanted to bring that up, so the public understands and know that we did receive a number of those emails.
Do you have any suggestions?
With that, I would say that we would have some public work sessions to be able to talk a little bit more about that in the public, and how does that look in terms of the services that we do provide now with the Police Department? And then talking about how we have other services that would be attached to the Police Department, or as you see with the Cahoos program, where a call goes in and it talks about other services that are offered, as well as the other public safety calls that may be requested.
All right, any other feedback or response? All right, next up, we have the Community Matters. We have four people, I think, signed up. Mr. Will, or do you have that list?
I do, Mayor Walker.
Okay, so if they are on there, you know, in order that they are signed up, then we can start with them, and then we can continue till we, you know, reach 16.
Great, if you want to get in line for public comment at this time, you can click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar, or you can press star nine if you're on via telephone. The first person that signed up in advance is Elizabeth Stark, and let me bring her in. Elizabeth, you're on the City Council, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
You've got three minutes.
Okay. Hello, councilors, my name is Elizabeth Stark, and I live on Fairway Avenue in the city of Charlottesville. I'm here to speak on a few matters. First, I ask that you revert to the initial PCRB bylaws. These bylaws were drafted by experts and community members to allow the kind of oversight needed to rein in a police force that we know polices black folks disproportionately. The disproportionate minority contact report proves it. You must take action. This moment calls for a fully funded, fully empowered CRB right now. I ask that you prioritize these changes immediately. And while I'm asking for increased oversight in the immediate term, we also need to evaluate the future of policing in our community in the long term. The DMC made clear that policing in the city is unequal and harms black folks every day, and still, nothing meaningful has been done to mitigate this harm or change the way police interact with black and brown communities. I support the demands of the thousands of protesters here in Charlottesville, led by local black youth who've been in the streets demanding change. These demands include waiving the fees for home monitoring indefinitely, ending pre-trial detention, and demilitarizing the police. Even as CPD has released their budgets, we are still in the dark about how they are spending our dollars. Cops do not need weapons of war to keep communities safe. We need details and meaningful accountability from CPD. I also fully support the protesters' demands to defund and disband the police. Some people might hear these terms and envision chaos, but the fact is that, over decades, we've shifted funds away from community support and toward policing, so much that now we rely on cops to serve people in the midst of mental health crisis, people with substance and alcohol use disorders, people experiencing homelessness, survivors of sexual assault, survivors of domestic abuse, and countless other sensitive matters that would be best handled by other professionals. Defunding the police is about taking funds we currently give to the police to do crisis work poorly and using those funds instead for trained professionals and meaningful community support. Someone with substance abuse disorder doesn't need to enter the criminal justice system, they need treatment, and an unhoused person doesn't need to be policed for not having a home, they need a home. The criminal justice system has destroyed the fabric of our communities and entangled millions in lasting generational harm. We can and must end the cycle, and it begins with defunding the police. I know, lastly, I'll just say, I know you just passed the budget, but in the same way that the budget was amended for equity efforts in the schools last year, it needs to be amended to shift funds from policing to community support this year. This moment calls for bold action. Please make these changes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up, Ashley Davies had signed up previously. I want to just activate her mic and make sure she wants to come back and talk now. Ms. Davies, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Did you want to speak at this opportunity as well?
I'll just say one thing, Ashley Davies, 1,000 Lucas Avenue. I did want to just congratulate the city on the vibrant communities initiative that was announced by the governor today. You mentioned it earlier, and as part of the team that worked on that, I'm just so happy for the city and the housing authority, and most importantly, the public housing residents, that we can use this $2 million plus the additional $800,000 to continue the effort in resident-led redevelopment of public housing. So it's great to get some some good news today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is David Swanson, who signed up in advance. David, you're on the council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening. David Swanson, Gillespie Avenue, everything Elizabeth Stark just said. Also, over 500 people, most of them from within Charlottesville, have signed this petition. Quote, "We urge you to ban from Charlottesville, one, military-style or warrior training of police by the U.S. military, any foreign military or police, or any private company; two, acquisition by police of any weaponry from the U.S. military, and to require enhanced training and stronger policies for conflict de-escalation and limited use of force for law enforcement," end quote. "These steps should be taken to formalize and legally institute these policies, no matter how much or how little the Charlottesville police are currently complying with them." A few weeks back, the National Football League and many media outlets believed flag ceremonies to be more important than protesting police murders of black people, which were at that time referred to as officer-involved deaths. Activism, not intellectual effort, changed that. More people can perhaps now see the insanity of putting police in children's schools. More people can now, and since the disaster here three years ago, see the counterproductive nature of militarized policing. Banning militarized policing now so that it cannot arise in the future will make us all safer. Banning permits for rallies by armed groups threatening violence won't hurt either. More could be done. Local activists have also demanded an end to pretrial detention and diversion of those funds to programs, including the Food Equity Program, Region 10, and the Charlottesville Free Clinic. Providing human services and the basis for good lives is less financially costly than police and incarceration. The Charlottesville City Council has in the past urged Congress to move money out of weapons and into human needs. A bill introduced today by Congresswoman Barbara Lee, surely the city should formally ban accepting any weapons from the U.S. military. I'm aware how slowly things can move. Over a year ago, the city divested its operating budget from weapons and fossil fuels and committed to working on the same with its retirement fund. I joined the retirement commission and have done everything I could to speed it along, and we've still barely cleared our collective throat. But the work of the petition, I stated, is achievable in a matter of minutes. The city council could do it this evening. Charlottesville, whether it likes it or not, and whether it deserves it or not, is a symbol of racist and anti-racist conflict. Statues are coming down everywhere else. Charlottesville has a responsibility to lead on these issues. Banning militarized policing is the least it can do. Thank you very much.
The next speaker who signed up in advance is Kate Fraley. Kate, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes.
I cede my time to Jeff Vogel.
Okay, we can make that happen, I think. Mr. Vogel, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. As I said in my email to the council last week, it's shocking that while we have the biggest protests that have ever been in the world over the issues of policing, racism in policing, and misconduct by police officers, that you have nothing on your agenda tonight, even starting to deal with that issue. We had a D M C report which scientifically proved the racism in the criminal justice system here. I had a copy of it in September. That's nine months ago. The only thing that's happened in those nine months is a presentation to the council. I don't know who was responsible for dragging their feet on the C R B, but thank God it's starting to get together. But there was certainly no rush in doing so. There are many things that can be done by this council without money being appropriated. I'll give you one example. You could pass a resolution prohibiting the use of the chemical weapons that are prohibited by international law from use in war and being allowed to be used on our people. It's less than three years ago that the city police department, through its deputy police chief, who was then affirmed by the police chief, who fired tear gas on peaceful protesters. Nothing has ever been done about that. He was allowed to retire on the highest possible salary. The city police exonerated him and exonerated everybody else. It's been their practice. We have heard some wonderful words from Chief Brackney in these last several weeks. But we don't need words. We need actions. We need to know, for example, what is being done about the disparity in searches and seizures? What's being done about disparity in certain in stop and frisk? What's being done about the disparity in the arrest rates? What's being done about the fact proven by the D M C that officers in Charlottesville charge black people with more serious crimes and more crimes, all of which leads to more black people going to jail for longer periods of time? That's what we need to hear. Many people were angry at the chief when she first came because she said she would refuse to deal with the issues that had arisen by about the tear gas being fired by the deputy chief. The excuse was, oh, I wasn't there, and I'm not going to go back. Well, many people were upset about that, and I think it was a bad entry into our community. We go back and look at crimes where we aren't. For cold cases, 50 years we go back. That's not an excuse. We need real transparency, not simply the revelation of public documents to be available to the public. And we need to know what is being done about the proven disparities in the treatment of racial minorities in this community, and we are not hearing it. And we haven't heard it for at least the 10 years that I've been fighting about this and that many other people have as well. I don't understand how you could possibly pass this moment without addressing, at least preliminarily, what we're going to do about policing, what we're going to do about racism in the police department, and how we're going to change how we do policing and how we're going to transfer money from the police department to more effective means of safety.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Walker.
About the original bylaws for the C R B, when all three councilors that were just elected last election were running, you guys said that you agree with the original bylaws and that you supported them. And now I know, I believe it's Councilman Snook, you did, you went back on your word that you no lo, I don't know if you no longer supported it or what the message was that you was trying to distribute to the community or the people that was holding you accountable for that. But if we could go back to those original bylaws, I would appreciate that as well. Also, if we're going to have a successful C R B, the C R B is going to need access to things that they were initially denied when this came up and then when it was discussed. Now, Chief Brackney knows me very well. I don't mind filing complaints on her officers. Everybody down there knows me very well. If we're going to talk about defunding, demilitarizing, and abolishing police as these people, you know, are saying in these protests, you gotta have some form of solution. So while I, yes, I want certain things to not be handled by police. Y'all shouldn't be handling mental health issues. You shouldn't be handling social service issues. They, we have departments for that type of stuff. We have the, we have other departments that can handle that type of stuff. Police aren't trained to handle that type of stuff, nor are they certified to handle that type of stuff. Officer Pendleton had a five-year-old girl pinned down on the floor with her hands behind her back at Johnson School, and the principal failed to report it, and I had to file a complaint on it. So this is the type of stuff that police should not have access to doing. That was just uncalled for. You could pick a five-year-old girl up. You don't have to throw her on the ground and have her pinned down with her face down. Not much a five-year-old can do to a grown man like Officer Pendleton. So we need those original bylaws back. You need some type of diversity training for officers given taught by black people. If you dealing with a diversity curriculum that was written by somebody that is not of color, they cannot teach you about colored people or colored communities. Most of that diversity training is not written by people of color. Also, the overpolicing in black neighborhoods need to stop. Y'all lying about calls, shots being fired. Y'all lying about calls going in, saying shots was fired. That's not always the case. Sometimes it's fireworks. Y'all be lying like calls coming in, saying shots was fired. I know for a fact that happened on 12th Street. I got a copy of the call log. There was no calls for shots fired. So the lying just has to stop. If you want to have a successful police department, you and your department have to stop lying. You have to stop lying, period. No more lies. You either gonna be straight, or you not gonna be straight because the community don't deserve lies. And then this permitting process for protest. Y'all either gonna have a process, or you not gonna have a process for permit. You either gonna have a policy for protest, or you not gonna have a policy for protest.
Thank you.
You can't just, oh, three minutes left?
Three minutes, 37 seconds.
Okay, ma'am. You got it. You still in your feeling.
Mayor Walker, next up is Brandon Collins. Brandon, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name's Brandon Collins. I live in Charlottesville. I've lived here my entire life. I have three children who've lived here their entire lives. And I also work for the Public Housing Association of Residents. I've been paying a lot of attention over the past couple of months to the various types of funding that are available to help with the current housing crisis and the exacerbated housing crisis caused by COVID-19. And I'm really disappointed to see tonight, in your discussion of C R F coronavirus relief funds from the CARES Act that passed through the governor, to see so very little of that money being allocated for housing. I think if you look ahead on your agenda to discussion of the the CAF and four programs that are being proposed, the four programs are really vital to this community, and I think you see similar needs around the country. That's homeless, that's renters who are in private housing, that's folks coming out of incarceration, and that's mortgage relief. None of that money coming from the CAF is enough to really make those programs pop and to alleviate a major crisis that is that is barreling right towards us in Charlottesville and the rest of the country. A lot of us were hoping that this money from the from the state government that came from the federal government would be a game changer, and certainly $4 million is a pretty good start if the bulk of that money was put towards rent relief, helping the homeless, helping helping formerly incarcerated and helping homeowners. Unfortunately, a very small amount is being allocated for what's being called community needs, one of those needs being housing. This is not a game changer, and it's really the last of current available pot of money that could have a major effect in keeping an eviction crisis from completely crippling our economy. So I see that there's a lot more money put into economic development than into housing from C R F, and I think that's unfortunate because you're not going to have an economy when you've got a whole bunch of people who are facing eviction and not enough funds to keep them housed. And I really hope you'll reconsider the amount of money that you're, where you're spreading out that $4 million and put the bulk of it into these four housing programs that are being proposed for the CAF. I think there's been some attempts at coordinating these different piles of money to do the right thing, but this is really the last pile of money anytime soon that's going to help with this. And we really got to be on top of this now because a couple of months down the road, an eviction crisis like you've never seen in your lifetime is about to hit this entire country, and it's going to make 2008 look like a picnic. So I really, really hope you'll start to look at putting more money into these housing programs that's going to help people, it's going to help the economy, and have things up and running so that if there is additional money that comes from the federal government, and we
Thank you.
You'll be ready. Thank you.
And I'll just add that I did send Dr. Richardson some comments about the funding, and I agree that we need to, you know, ensure that the categories that we are spending the money in, that that is the most effective solution for that. And housing and then was at the top of my list, and I was specifically asking about that. It's the category which the HVAC systems, something modifications, I don't have it in front of me at this time. But so that is definitely a conversation that during that time I will, you know, be bringing up.
Mayor Walker, next up is Rory Stolzenberg. Rory, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to talk about Saturday specifically. I'll start off by once again acknowledging the city police officers on the ground for their professionalism and restraint. It's a sad state of affairs where it's notable that police didn't brutally disrupt residents' exercise of their basic right to peaceably assemble and express their views, but given the behavior of police around the country and historically in this city, it's worth mentioning. However, we deserve answers for why dozens and dozens, three busloads or more of state troopers were brought to Vinegar Hill on Saturday to suit up in riot gear and prepare to disrupt the protest. Who invited them here? Who paid for their overtime? Why were state troopers driving city vehicles? Whether or not C P D is specifically responsible for their presence by an explicit request, Virginia State Police's behavior elsewhere in Virginia shows that they do not belong at demonstrations. This city must stop cooperating, collaborating with militarized violent responses to residents exercising their sacred First Amendment rights. Thank you.
So it is my understanding, just because, and I asked about this because the citizens sent me a email that there were, I think they said 30 state troopers headed toward Charlottesville. So I asked if they were coming here per our invitation, and I was informed, no. So that's all the information that I have on that. And Dr. Richardson, Chief Brackney, is there any additional information about the why they, who invited them to the area?
I defer to Chief Brackney on that.
So, hi, so as all of the marches and rallies that have gone on for the past three weeks and three weekends, we've used the exact same approach. This time, though, this this marching rally started on UVA's campus and not in the city, as has been traditional up until this point. We did all operate under a unified command in response to any of the protections that protections that might be needed to, to block off streets to allow any of the marches and rallies, if they decided to go more ways, they did in this case as well. Um, that is correct. There were not thirty police cars coming to, um, Charlottesville and staging in Vinegar Hill, much like was just said, um, all of our events are including, um, access for the vehicles come out of City Yard, which are right over on, um, off of Ridge. And that's what I'm guessing, um, um, Rory was referring to or referencing, um, there. Um, I don't have any knowledge of any state troopers driving city cars. They didn't have our vehicles and don't have our vehicles. Um, they do have a location in this area where they have and keep their officers pretty frequently as well. And that's not as a result of being invited in. They are stationed in this area. They are stationed here. So it's not an invite that occurs. Hopefully that answers the question. Um, Mayor Walker, unless you had something a bit more detailed you needed?
No, just, just that I'd ask too, based on the feedback that I received. So I just, um, wanted to say that. Okay.
Mayor Walker, our eighth speaker is Haley Elsazzy, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name, but you're live with council. You've got three minutes.
Hello. Thank you so much. I hope you can hear me now. Um, I just wanna turn our attention again to the movement for defunding the CPD. Um, so it's clear to us as Charlottesville community members that police reform is an ineffective strategy for promoting the safety of all its residents, especially black residents who face an increased risk of police violence and surveillance. We recognize that reform strategies such as anti-bias training, use of force reforms and quote-unquote mindset shifts offer no protection against police violence. These measures function to deflect public scrutiny, funnel additional revenue to the police and secure the authority of the CPD within the city. The problem of police violence is not a bad cop problem. It is an institutional problem to be solved through the dismantling of the police force and the subsequent creation of social support services administered by social workers, mental health professionals, EMTs, nurses, on-road traffic specialists and trauma-informed crisis intervention teams. We believe that as long as the CPD operates within our city, it will continue to harm black and brown residents. The residents of Charlottesville are paying attention to where our tax dollars go. I noticed that while twenty-three percent of the fiscal year 2021 city budget goes to public safety and justice, including the CPD, sheriffs, courts, only sixteen point seven percent goes to all of the items under healthy families and community, which includes contributions to education and the arts, the Department of Social Services, Housing Services, the Office of Human Rights, Parks and Recreation, and all other essential services for the community. The redirection of public funds away from policing and into community-based programs will directly address issues disproportionately affecting black, brown and undocumented Charlottesville residents. The Charlottesville City Council holds the power to act now and take anti-racist action to boldly transform the city into one that prioritizes the needs of all its residents. And now I just want to reiterate the demands of the defund CPD movement, which are, we demand the city, county and state increase the number of people being released from jail and prison, especially given the current high risk of death from COVID-19. Two, we demand all people on work release be immediately set free. Three, we demand the fee for home monitoring be waived indefinitely. Four, we demand the end of pre-trial detention. Five, we demand the police end targeted harassment and surveillance of black, brown and undocumented folks in our community. Six, we demand the immediate demilitarization and defunding of the Charlottesville City Police. And lastly, we demand Charlottesville City Schools and its contract with the CPD. Um, so thank you for this time and I just wanna reiterate, this is such an important issue right now as we've seen from the protests and we really need this on the agenda now, not later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Don Gathers. Don, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well and being safe. Uh, just a few things. Again, join, lending my voice to join in the call with the other, uh, callers to, uh, urge, uh, city manager and council to amend the budget, reopen the process and, uh, move towards, uh, defunding the, the, the police department, shift some of those funds to where they will be more, more aptly used and more appropriately used. Um, it, it's, it's, it's odd that, that so many state police officers would have descended on Charlottesville. We, we've had no, no incidents here of, uh, of any concern, uh, throughout the, the three weeks, uh, after Mr. Floyd's murder, when just down the street in Richmond, uh, there have been issues and it seems like those resources from the state would have been better utilized there as opposed to, uh, once again, giving the citizens of Charlottesville that uneasy feeling in their guts. But, I mean, that's, that's what it, that's where we're at. And, and it's, it's, it's sickening to know that while protests were going on in Richmond, while protests were going on here, we had another incident of violence while we're protesting. Something's gotta change and I think that the only way that you, you make people realize that is, is to many times hit them in their pocketbook. So we've gotta move the police towards doing some things that police departments apparently don't want to or can't do. Every police chief in the country knows who their bad apples are. And many times they're hamstrung by, by, by unions. We don't have that issue here. So between Charlottesville and Albemarle, the, the chiefs need to go ahead and get those bad apples out. We know, we know who they, who they are in the community and I'm sure that the other officers and the chiefs and upper management know as well. We need to go ahead and, and go back, revert to the original bylaws that were presented through the CRB. Uh, those, those were much more powerful and meaty and meaningful, especially considering the climate that we're in right now. We need to go back to where we have a sincere and, and, and absolute system of checks and balances. Again, as an insurance policy, both for the officers that are doing the jobs and the way in which they were, they, they're supposed to and for the citizens as well, uh, as a means of protection. And I would really like that, that for you all to consider possibly postponing your summer break, considering the fact that July 1st, the new law goes into effect about communities being able to do something with their Confederate monuments. Um, and in light of all that is going on right now in the country, I think it's imperative that, that our elected leadership is available and on hand and so that we can begin the process of the discussions to go ahead to decide what exactly it is that we as Charlottesville are going to do with those Confederate statues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, our 10th speaker is JoJo Robertson. JoJo, you're on with city council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, Brian. Um, so I just wanted to talk about a few things tonight. Uh, number one being, um, social services and just the situation there in general. Um, and with the idea of everyone's talking about defunding the police and putting more money into social services. And, uh, honestly, I think the only way that should happen is if social services is taken apart. Right now, there, uh, is an unhealthy pattern of taking brown and black babies from their family members and either putting in fo- foster care or adopted out. And, um, I've seen this happen with other people and just recently with a black-skinned best friend of mine who took in her two grandchildren so that they would not be put in foster care. And the only reason the chi- children were taken away from her was the white birth mom decided she wanted to play mommy again. And Judge Moore thought it would be nice, uh, even though every other judge in Ju- juvenile domestic, um, found in my friend's favor, Judge Moore didn't. Go figure that one out, right? Um, I'd also like to point out that during the seven years, my friend jumped through hoops. She jumped through hoops. She did this, everything social service asked, asked her to do. She had people in her house, counselors and people that watched her with the children and, I mean, went on and on from late, but day till sundown, people were in her house. Not once did she have a black person or representative for her. She asked social services over and over if she could have a black person over this case so they could understand my friend's family and their dynamic and not once was she given that. And personally, I'd also like to say that if there are any black bodies, um, who are having issues with social services, um, my friend actually had two. One was Megan Gordon and another was David Zito, who they do, I don't know where, I, I'm just appalled, appalled. They do not understand what it is to be black and living in Charlottesville and what it is to be, uh, an African-American grandmother trying to take care of these children. They don't get it. So do not give social services a dime when you defund the police unless you tear them apart. Because right now, everyone knows, in Charlottesville, people know what happens to brown and black babies. Um, if anybody's had any issues with social services, uh, I'm a community activist. I would love to know so that we can compile these and take care of our babies that are being viciously taken away from their family. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have some comments about that as someone who, you know, part of the comments I wanna make, I'm gonna just address it at the end. But, um, the point that she just made about we don't have any systems in Charlottesville, um, that are healthy, um, even when we talk about the concerns that we've had over the years for, um, our own Department of Social Services and some of the work that they are doing. And if you talk to black families about their experience there, um, at Region 10, which something else has been missing. And I think I'm gonna keep all this, you know, in my head to just comment on. But, um, we have, um, you know, some serious work to do even before we can say that those, um, spaces, um, would help families heal, um, and especially if we are talking about, um, you know, black families, um, who we're supposed to be talking about at this time. So I have some, um, you know, a lot of thoughts about all of this, but I'm gonna share it at the end of this.
Mayor Walker, our next speaker is Adele Roof. Adele, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes. Can you hear us, Adele? You will have to unmute your microphone.
How are you about that?
There you go.
Thank you. My name is Adele Roof. Greetings to the city council. I live at 772 Marion Green, uh, District 901. I've had the pleasure of living in either Charlottesville or Albemarle for over forty years. And I was gonna say a lot of things about, um, the demilitarization and the senseless and tragic death that we are also familiar with these past weeks and the history of those before, but so many tonight have spoken eloquently about that. So what I'd like to say is that I really fervently hope that the city council will endorse David Swanson's petition, um, for all the reasons that are so obvious. But to make a direct and specific statement, uh, would mean so much. You may not know that the city, uh, Council of Durham, North Carolina has made a similar bold commitment, a vision statement of where they want to go in terms of demilitarizing the training and weapons of the police. I would like Charlottesville to be the second city in the nation and the first in Virginia to make a similar public commitment. Um, we're known all over the nation because of the tragic events of, uh, August 2017, we're even known all over the world. Uh, we can lead in this initiative to move away from, uh, militarization of the police in terms of training weapons, et cetera. And your actions can inspire other cities to follow suit. And so that is what I would like to appeal to you tonight, to really seriously consider supporting David Swanson's petition and having a vision statement that is made public that you are going to move in the direction that so many people have spoken to you about tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Walker, our 12th speaker is Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, city council, for this time, uh, to talk. I certainly can't elaborate any more better than the people that have come before me in reference to housing, in reference to defunding the police and, uh, the things that they've been talking about. One of the things I am very concerned about is community engagement with the upcoming initial meeting and meetings going forward of the PCR B. Um, I would very much like to see a public meeting since we are kind of phasing in, um, some more strategic, uh, use of our spaces and being in those spaces instead of being here virtually. You have a huge pavilion right next to City Hall that will probably not be used for most of the summer, uh, from what I can tell. And it would be a wonderful physically distancing space to be used for community members to come out and, uh, meet with the PCR B, meet with these meetings that, uh, Dr. Richardson is talking about in reference to how we go about defunding the police department, how we go about reimagining what us public safety looks like. And I would like to, like I say, throw that out there, that we use that space. Um, it's got a P A system. You've got plenty of space for people to sit safely. You can certainly have, you know, I don't know how many people are watching on Facebook or over your live stream over the, uh, website, but I know there's only thirty-two people, um, that, uh, Mr. Wheeler has said were actually on, um, the Zoom webinar, which is not enough to really have good community engagement. And I will say that I attended the rally or the, the protest this weekend. And I must admit, um, I felt safest when I knew that there were community defenders out there. Uh, I felt safest that they had eyes on everything going on. I didn't feel safe as I watched, uh, to the north, uh, there at the 250 interchange, as I watched the, um, police cars inch closer and closer uh, towards the barracks Emmett Road intersection. And I really do feel that had the, um, if, uh, protest organizers not been on a tight, um, agenda, they did, you know, they, they, they did very well with what they needed to do. That I think that had we stayed there a little bit longer, I believe we would have seen some of those Virginia state troopers with their Call of Duty military wear, ready to, um, perhaps use it against pe- very peaceful protesters. And it does bother me to know that there were Virginia State Police at Vinegar Hill, which, um, just, just is, is very wrong. Uh, certainly should be able to find some other place where they can, you know, hole up at. Uh, I certainly do support with the initial meeting that I hope that the PCR B that we vote to go back to the original bylaws because I think that we need now that kind of strong board to be able to work with the community in reimagining how we're all gonna be looking as we go through this pandemic and come out the other side. So thank you very much for my time. I certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, our next speaker is Brad Slocum. Brad, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
All right. Is this working?
It is.
Excellent. Thank you. So my name's Brad Slocum. I'm a resident of the city. Um, I'd just like to follow up on some of the earlier comments regarding the, uh, deployments of, uh, uh, police resources over the weekend. And, uh, I don't, I personally don't feel like I got a very satisfactory answer regarding the uh, possible presence of state troopers. And I'm also curious if, uh, the city or maybe the county requested what appears to be a Cessna 206H Turbo stationary that circled, uh, the, uh, western Uh, western side of the city, particularly circled at least by my personal count, looking up into the sky eight times over the barracks road intersection. Uh, so I'm just wondering if um, you know, the city police or somebody else is requesting.
We can't hear you, Charlie.
I'm wondering if the city police or other.
Brad, Brad. Your connection.
All right, I'll try to just uh briefly say.
You're still, we still can't hear you.
Sounds like a microphone problem, Brad.
Your mic volume went down suddenly.
All right, is this any better?
Comes and goes.
Is is there a message, Brian?
We still can't hear you. Do you wanna work on it and try?
Brad, in the um reservation email you got, there's a phone number and you're welcome to call that, put in the webinar ID. We can bring you back on that way. Mayor Walker, the next person who's raised their hand is James Watson. James, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, um, I appreciate you guys doing these meetings over Zoom. Uh, one of the things I've been thinking about lately that not a lot of people are really talking about. Is when uh school starts, when when school starts based on the schedule that was released the other day. Kids are gonna be going to school about two days a week. I think maybe up to three days a week, but pretty much two days a week. And one of my big concerns is that we currently have a lot of people unemployed. Uh, countrywide and definitely in Charlottesville. Charlottesville is a very service uh service-based oriented. Community and a lot of the uh employers, you know, provide jobs that are very difficult to. Uh, you know, actually, yeah, actually pursue it with 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 social distancing in place. So my my concern is all the kids that could either potentially be home by themselves. Or all the parents that are gonna have to make that choice as to whether to go to work or stay home with their children. And of course, some of that is going on right now. But, you know, three, four months is one thing, but when you start thinking about. An entire school year, it gets to be very alarming, particularly for people with younger children. And you know, if I was up at the top, what I would do, if I was the president, is I would enact the Peace Corps. You know, we've sent the Peace Corps across the world for years and years to to help people in various countries. And what I would do is I would take that twenty two to thirty year old population that has college degrees. And then send them out to various communities. And then, you know, kids who have nowhere really to go. If if they really can't get any kind of appropriate homeschooling or a safe place, then these these uh. Peace Corps, you know, members would would provide some type of a uh educational window in a place like Jefferson School. Or YMCA, Boys and Girls Club. But I think that's gonna be a big problem. And one of the things that's, you know, right now, people that are unemployed are getting that. Six hundred dollars a week. But the uh, the our our senate will probably not uh approve. The six hundred dollars a week that folks are getting today. So we're not seeing. We we may not be seeing what we're gonna see in about, you know, seven, eight weeks when that money gets cut off. And some of those people don't have a job to return to. And then, oh, by the way, school starts and the kids can only go to school two days a week. So this is really a uh, a concern of mine in a community. I don't know, maybe a task force needs to be uh assembled. Uh, where people sit around and come up with some ideas and then execute on those ideas. I know, I know this is kind of a school board thing, but it's really something that. I was just gonna listen to this meeting tonight, but I've I've been thinking about this. I have young kids myself, but I have lots of options and and a lot of people don't have options. And so. I'm really concerned um again with what's gonna happen with families when they have nowhere to put their kids. They may not have a job. The unemployment amount that people are receiving today is is most likely gonna uh decrease. So that's that's what I want to say. And the other thought is if if there's CARES Act money, I saw that the the city transit is gonna get like fifteen million dollars. And maybe they need it because transit is expensive, but but maybe some of that could be reallocated. Again, we we can talk more later. I know I've only got three minutes.
Thank you.
So thank you.
And um, you know, I. Will just comment on this um school schedule. And I know that the um system, you know, Dr. Atkins and the school board, they're trying to do the best that they can. But this is what happens when decisions are being based on um capitalism and not public health. And people are trying to figure out um, you know, how to meet the need of the demands to open the economy. Um, with all these unknowns associated with the um COVID nineteen. Which no one, even the people making these decisions, um really have any answers to. Um, and. Every every decision that's being made, we are playing Russian roulette with lives. And I'm gonna keep saying it and I've been making sure that I post on um Facebook to make sure people are informed about this. But the schools got cursed, which I'm not gonna do right now because I already did it earlier, but. When I saw the school schedule and even the parents that's gonna have to figure out, like you said, how to um work. And because demands to reopen the economy, but kids are gonna be alternating Tuesday and Thursday and the Wednesday and Friday schedule. Uh, but we understand why that is because you can't have everyone in the building. But if you have half of the number, which is the direction we're going, um, the public health concern. Um, we know how easily this um virus spread. There's many, there are a lot of concerns there. So. We get the updates, you you know, we are sometimes asked about the conversation. That's ultimately Dr. Atkins, her team and the school board. Um, decisions, but I have shared with her my thoughts about um the schedule. I will just say what I've said to her and anybody who's asked me. I have um one kid left in the um public school system. Um, my family, nieces, nephews, cousins, their children, you know. And I have encouraged all of them to figure out a plan that doesn't involve sending their kids um back to school and asking for those virtual learning. Um, opportunities and then figuring out within the family unit how we can take care of each other. Um, and I know that'll be difficult from some for some of them as they express, but I made it clear that when I'm asked, I'm gonna be honest. Um, about the fact that it's not something that I trust and that my kid isn't going. Um, so I get your concerns.
Mayor Walker, I think we have Brad Slocum back. Um, Brad, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Sounds much better. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you so much. I'll try to keep it brief uh to respect the time. Uh, I'm just wondering, following up on the previous concerns about. Uh, deployed uh police or other city resources uh regarding the protest on Saturday, according to. Uh, publicly available flight data, it looks like a Cessna aircraft circled the western side of the city. Uh, including uh by my count on the ground, looking up into the sky and noticing the same plane on the same flight path for at least forty five minutes during eight. Loops around the barracks road intersection. Uh, I'm curious if the city is using. Resources to surveil protesters using aircraft. Uh, and uh. This may come off as a little callous, but heaven forbid any other sort of aircraft accident occurred. Would that be blamed on protesters as. Uh, it has been in the past and uh especially given that I doubt any of the event organizers or attendees. Requested that city resources be deployed in such a way. And if it wasn't the city, uh, it'd be nice to know if the state or other organizations are. Uh, surveilling protesters from the air. And uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, our fifteenth speaker is Walt Heinecke, and we do have one more slot open. If somebody wants to raise their hand. They can click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar or press star nine on their telephone. Walt, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Thanks, members of council and Mayor Walker for the opportunity to speak. Um, first, I wanted to just uh say something about the consent agenda item that you pushed off. Um, we're in the midst of a a housing uh study, a comprehensive plan revision, a zoning study. And an equity strategy. And I personally don't mind that we have time for what I would call mindful development. And I think slowing down the process is completely a a palatable idea at this point. Um, moving on, I want to completely support what uh Brandon Collins said about taking that CARE Act money and um putting it into the um. Into the CAF and those important programs that the CAF uh support. I think it's really important because we're in the middle of a housing crisis right now. Um, third, um, when it comes to the CRB, um, you know, um. The baseline for talking about policing has shifted in the wake of the murder of George Floyd. Um, the ba- baseline has shifted um significantly. Um, I think the the discussion that you've heard today, the request. That you've heard today to go back to the original ordinance and the original bylaws of the CRB as they were submitted to you by the initial police civilian review board. In July of last year is really just, uh, I I mean, it's it's at the the simplest end of the continuum of what you might do right now. Um, we're talking, people are now talking about defunding and abolishing. For you to revert back to those. Stronger, more uh more stringent um ordinance and bylaws is the least I think you can do. And I'd like to see uh a counselor tonight make a simple resolution. That the city council direct the uh city attorney to revert back to the original ordinance and bylaws. I think there's. Uh, I think there's enough interest on council for that resolution, that simple resolution to be made. And a second to be obtained and a discussion to happen um as well. Lastly, um, I know COVID kind of put you back on um things like looking at the Human Rights Commission, but they're meeting again. And you now have before you a letter from major social justice organizations um in Charlottesville, laying out a plan for cleaning up. And fixing the problems with the Human Rights Commission. We're gonna, we're gonna come out of this COVID um. Um, problem with a lot of problems that are being highlighted with unemployment and underemployment by race in the city. And I think it's time for the Human Rights Commission to get serious. And you have a, you have a pathway, I think, to clean up. And strengthen the Human Rights Commission. It's pretty clear on what needs to happen to make that uh um attend to its original intentions. So I'd like you, I'd like to ask you to be more assertive in your intervention. With the Human Rights Commission and getting it back on track. I think you need to intervene right now. They're looking to hire uh to to create a position description for a new hire. And I think this is the point where council really needs to intervene assertively and get that Human Rights Commission back on track toward its original mission. Of dealing with housing and racial discrimination in this town. Thank you.
Mayor Walker, our sixteenth speaker is Emily Dripus. Emily, you're on the city council. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to talk about a few different things. Um, I agree with the statements that have been made tonight about the. Um, police civilian review board and other concerns about overpolicing. Um, but I think I don't have anything better to add than any one else said. I have a lot of concern about what's happening with affordable housing, given the COVID nineteen crisis. A little over a million dollars, as far as I know, is basically level funding. For the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, which is the main source of um. Positive programming for increasing deeply affordable housing in addition to what the housing authority is doing. And this is not the time for level funding. I think um this is the time, as Walt just said, for. Being more assertive in your intervention. That was a really wonderful turn of phrase, and I hope that you all will. Look at how you can aggressively address the need for stable, affordable housing. Deeply affordable housing, especially for very low income people. Um, the other concern I have is related to what's happening for programming for youth. As far as I hear, there is very little available, and I know it would take a lot to create that, but I think we need the city to look at that. Whether it's getting laptops that have been called back to school buildings, back into the hands of kids and providing some. Programming, some opportunity to decrease social isolation and also provide source um supports for parents. Because I think that the isolation and the um, the amount of unstructured time. Is really creating terrible barriers for many people and will create lasting trauma. So I appreciate the mayor's approach. As a public health issue, we need more and we need the city to assertively. Intervene on more fronts than is happening at this point. Thank you.
All right, that was the um last speaker. Any comments? From council?
Mayor Walker, I wonder whether it would be appropriate to ask Chief Brackney to comment specifically on the couple of things that. Um, Mr. Swanson had requested in his uh in his motion or his petition. To ban from Charlottesville military style or warrior training of police by the US military, any foreign military or police or any private company. I'd like to know what we're doing in that respect. What, was there something to ban? And second, acquisition by police of any weaponry from the US military and require enhanced training. And stronger policies for conflict de-escalation and limited use of force for law enforcement. Could we ask Chief Brackney to tell us what? What Charlottesville is doing that implicates either of those two requests?
So, thank you, counselor. Um, just a couple of things, the Charlottesville Police Department or more importantly, the city of Charlottesville. Because you can't enter into any of these contracts or even these agreements without the actual city approving. So when we talk about Charlottesville Police Department doing these things, these are actually things that would be if they were sanctioned by the city themselves. Um, to make it more clear, this, the police department has not participated or the city participated. And what's called the ten thirty three, which everyone will talk about is about the militarization of policing. We have not accepted any um equipment from the government or the military since two thousand and eight. And in twenty fifteen, they completely severed from the program and returned any and all equipment that they had acquired. Under my predecessor's um tenure. So that we don't do that. Um, for the record, we do not have any planes. We do not have any surveillance techniques. We do not have any drones. We do not have any Cessnas. We do not have any helicopters. Um, or anything else. We don't have any tanks. We don't have any um, as someone asks, Humvees that are able to survive landmines. We don't um own or acquire any of those. Um, and I believe um. That the training, we don't receive any of our training um from any of the military agencies as well. Um, so I think I hopefully have answered the questions about our training, about our military um acquisitions or lack thereof. Um, or any of the other current um calls when it comes to demilitarizing our police department. If there's something I missed, please just flag me on that.
So one thing requesting enhanced training and stronger policies for conflict de-escalation. What training do the officers receive now? In de-escalation?
So the officers participated um in several of them. One, they get them at their training academy. Also eighty five percent of our officers are crisis intervention team members, in which they receive de-escalation training. And then in twenty eighteen, they went through an additional eight hours of de-escalation training as well. Um. So they're receiving approximately fifty hours of de-escalation training and every crisis intervention officer has to recertify. Um, as well in their de-escalation um trainings. I know um. There was a brief mention by Dr. Richardson about Kahoots, and um that is the program that came out of um Oklahoma. Those are programs in which um they're mobile crisis response teams. This is not a new effort. If you look, um, I came from the city of Pittsburgh. We had RESOLVE. R E S O L V E. And that was the mobile crisis team that partnered with. And that was the mobile crisis team that partnered with our police officers more than ten years ago. And what would it started was, is that they have a mobile team that responds, not the 911 calls, the calls go into the non-emergency line, and then they're deflected to RESOLVE, um, as a mobile crisis team that would then go in and address someone who may be, um, experiencing a crisis. So, these are not new initiatives, are not new programs, and, um, under the Pittsburgh program, there was priority access given if an officer had brought someone in under emergency custody order or a temporary detention order, that they had beds in the community, at the local hospitals, in the crisis team that were reserved strictly for those. So the likelihood to do, to have to intervene was even less than currently now, where you might transport somebody under the state statutes where you must get them into beds across the state in order to get them treatment or to get them help. Um, so that is some of the training that they receive. Um, and again, hopefully that answers the additional question that you had.
Mayor Walker, if I might comment for just a moment?
Yes.
Um, I do know that Region 10, not within the last few years, was trying to get funding also for a mobile crisis intervention. And I don't know if, how much of the funding actually ended up coming through. I know that they have been looking into that now for a while and trying to work towards this.
And, and the, uh, what Chief Brackney referenced, the cahoots program, which is a cute little acronym for, I don't remember what, the CA, critical, something or other, uh, people on, uh, helping out on the streets or something like that, uh, is out of Eugene, Oregon. Um, and it's since been adopted, I know, uh, pretty clearly in Austin, Texas, and there are a couple of other places too. Uh, cahoots has been around for thirty years in, in Eugene, and has basically been taking, I think similar to what Chief Brackney was saying about RESOLVE, uh, calls come into their 911 center, and they may get diverted from, by the 911 operator to the people who are more mental health people. And they've, in Eugene, they've taken about seventeen percent of the calls. Uh, and it's, it's apparently been a very successful program and saved everybody a bunch of money. The other question though, that I had, and this kind of gets back, gets to something that Jeff Fogel was asking, is there anything that the police department is doing to respond to or adjust to or to cope with the issues about disproportionate and disparate impacts that were revealed by the DMC study?
So thank you for that question. Um, actually, I've been one of the persons who's pushed back the hardest on the DMC, um, study, and not for reasons that most people would say initially. Um, my pushback has been, is that it did not collect, um, the appropriate data, and it didn't start at the place where most people are entering into the police system. So if you look at all of the data, they started, um, at other places. Um, they did not collect the data about the contacts and the interventions between the police officers and that person. So they picked it up midway in the system. And again, we don't need a report to tell us that there's disproportionality across, um, the criminal justice system. But what I've said is, if you're looking at reform and practices and policies for genuine reform, you might want to actually start at that first point of contact. Um, and they did not do that. Um, I also push back in that they did not, um, they weren't able to reconcile data. And what I meant by that is, um, that here in Charlottesville, we collect very different data. We do collect, um, race and ethnicity, um, and we do collect investigative detentions, and we have body worn camera here, but our partners don't collect the same data. So they could not include our data into any of the studies, um, because there was no real comparison when you're putting an entire population together. And they were using a population study across of just the, um, the Charlottesville and Abilmarl communities. So if you don't have data to data that you can compare, you would only have Charlottesville's data, and it would just skew, completely skew the reports. Um, in addition to that, they did not pull out what I should, thought would be really revealing, if any of the encounters or any of the data were officer initiated versus those in which the officer has no choice but to respond, whether it's a warrant, um, whether it's a probation or parole violation, or whether it was initiated by 911 or someone coming to the station, or if someone flagged them down, um, as they were on the streets. So there's a lot of gaps, um, in that data and those data sets that I asked that they actually look at. Um, so to address those issues, and long before the report came out, counselor, um, I engaged with the Center for Policing Equity, who is the national standard bearer of determining whether your policing policies and practices are disproportionate. Um, and I did that as early as October of 2018, as soon as I'm arriving here, that we started working for them, or working with them. We also enter all of our data into the national data, our justice database as well. So we are one of those ones who are the voluntary agencies, and where there's only a hundred and fifty across the nation of eighteen thousand policing agencies. We voluntarily give them all of our data and our demographics around policies, the amount of persons that we encounter and how we encounter them, and the outcome of those encounters. Um, in addition, because of the reports and prior to the reports, you know, we've been posting our investigative detention data. Every person that we encounter, the, um, outcomes of those, I'm actually, have those on my screen right now because I've made a commitment that we would have those out by the fifteenth of every month, business day of every month, so that someone doesn't say that I'm not being honest. It's the fifteenth business day of every month that we get those out. Uh, we post all of our use of force, every incident on the website. In this last posting, we added the gender and race of the officer and the gender and race of the subject. Um, we're now posting all of our internal affairs, when they come in, everything that you can do to at least try and say, here's more additional information to help our citizens make an informed decision about how they want to, or the services and what they want and demand and should demand from our police department.
So if, if you're concerned about the, the validity of the data collection, but you acknowledge that there are disparate impacts, which is what the data collection is intending to serve, or to, to prove, what are you, completely aside from the, the data in the DMC, what are you doing to address the disparate impacts?
So if you look at the website and all the things I just listed, um, those are the things that we're doing to address the potential disparities that I may not have. So if you look at all the data that we have, even on our, um, charging data, and it says that fifty percent of, um, our charging data are parole violations, right? So the officers have no control over parole violations. They have to, um, when there's a warrant issued for that, to do that. So for initially coming into contact with individuals, the best way to see if we were disparate now since September of 2018, to see, um, and if you look at it, there is no disparity about the, the persons that they are accounting and the, the, um, legal outcomes. However, that's often not enough for communities because we know we're part of an entire system. Um, so they are getting their training, they are getting additional training on bias-based policing. I submitted a proposal, um, in January of twenty, twenty of this year, um, asking, could we bring in the Anti-Defamation League, who I work with and sit on, um, their committees for bias-based, um, hate crimes and, and things like that. They are the, also the standard bearer in these types of trainings, um, for bias-based incidents, since they've been tracking hate and bias-based, um, incidents that, as their founding principles. Um, that is still in the works to see if we are able to get that funded, um, through them. In addition to it, uh, we paid for our officers also to be funded or have additional funding in de-escalation training, and had one of our officers a train to, a trainer, um, who is now housed in our police department so that we can train internally as well, um, as some of our support systems.
Well, there are other discussions we can have, but we've, I've taken up enough of everybody's time tonight. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
To that point, obviously, it is important that we continue to have, have the, that we engage the community in that, and we partner with the chief and her team, um, as we look at what the future looks like, um, for our community, given obviously this high interest here for good reason. Um, so I just, uh, tonight, we're not gonna, you know, be able to work through only so much, but, um, I think it's just important that we figure out our, our plan forward and how we're gonna be able to engage in those conversations, obviously in a more restrictive way, given, um, the nature that we're in with COVID right now.
And I'll just say, um, the comments that I have received and some of the Facebook posts and stuff, I don't, um, there is nothing about like this moment in history that we're in right now that I need to do anything different. I show up with the same passion and intensity every day, and I ask people the, um, questions that need to be asked every day, um, before I was mayor and since, um, being mayor. And, um, there is nothing about my record here that, um, I feel anyone can question. And the only thing that comes close is the comments around the, um, CRB. And as I've stated before, um, that whole initial process was really messy. It was hard for anyone to follow, including me. Um, and I have shared that once, um, it was clear that the participation, that you got pushed back on every end, anything you tried to do. If you offered your assistance, you were, um, they said that you were interfering. If you didn't offer your assistance, you didn't care enough. Um, and I'm looking forward to having, um, this discussion with, um, the new board. And I really hope, um, that it doesn't result in, um, the same kind of communication, um, the conflicts that I think got in the way of, um, things, um, happening the last time. And something I never do, but I ask people to participate in this meeting, just watch it, um, that have been affected by policing in Charlottesville, um, and have been spent time in prison and have been over-police. And even within, and I'm, I want to get into it, but we might save those from a dis, for a discussion. There are things happening every day, um, that perpetuate some of the same issues that we claim we want to fight. So for the citizens who've been calling on, um, me, that they are saying that there is something missing, um, I am confident of, um, my record and, um, the work that I do in this community and the way that I show up in every room. And I would also like to say, and you know, some of, you know, my family members have been, one of them has been texting me since, um, we've been on council, because she's not often watching, um, you know, watching it. But when we are talking about policing, this isn't some theory, it isn't, uh, you know, something that's in a book, it isn't about a movement. If I am in any way, um, saying that it's okay for the police to over-police, to abuse the system, to continue to perpetuate a system that leads to mass incarceration, or any system in this community, the social service system, human service systems, all the kind of pushback I have received since being on council for, um, you know, kind of being too intense. We're not talking about like random people or people in books or case studies. We are talking about family members, um, friends, loved ones. Um, I s, I have, um, on my phone right now, um, when you miss a call, that says, this call is from a federal prison, right? This is not a, um, anything that I need anyone to tell me anything about. This is my life. And if I say that it's okay, or if I'm letting, in my position, as people are saying, because of the relationship they perceive, um, that I have with Chief Brackney, and I do trust Chief Brackney, and I trust her more than any, um, police officer that has been in this community. Um, and I think based on the work that I know that she's attempting to do here, that there is nobody that has made me feel more comfortable, the fact that I know that black bodies, um, black men, black women, black children, that I love and care about dearly are in this community and are the subjects of these, um, police conversations that we're talking about. Um, and so my issue here has been the fact that this community, who claims that they are so liberal and progressive, has wanted a black woman to bend over and take the blame for a white police chief reign. That is what I have found to be unacceptable, and that is what I'm not participating in. So if you want to blame her for something she has done, that is what the blame. And if those actions lead to the overpolicing, mass incarceration, the abuse, the murders that you all are talking about, then we're coming with the same energy. But if you want her to take the fall for a man that is still in this community, that is at the University of Virginia in a higher paid position than she is, that is getting, um, credit for statements that he recently made in public address, I have an issue with that. And when we're talking about dismantling, um, defunding, do not participate in acts that perpetuate it. And every conversation that I've had with people, that is what I've had. I don't know Chief Brackney outside of her coming in this community, just like you all. My family, over eighty-five percent of my family is in this community. The cousin that I was just talking about that's been texting me, so if you saw me smile a little bit of smirk, is from her text messages, not from that I wasn't taking the comments or conversations seriously. But her brother and sister went to prison as teenagers in nineteen ninety-seven because of this police department. When wa, seventeen, years old, just a year eighteen, at the time, I was seventeen. My cousin was eighteen, and her brother, her mom has three children, and two of them did not get out of prison until President Obama changed the law. So this is not a game to me. It is something I take very seriously, and that's just one family member. And I asked her to be on this call, and I asked the other people to be on this call, because if you want to have real conversations about abuse, if you want to fully know my understanding of the abuses that have taken place, we have conversations. And it's not going to be about any book, anything that's been written, anything someone think. I'm gonna have the people give you those stories and also tell you what they think about what's going on now. We know these are systems that are broken. Uh, when I introduced Chief Brackney to the Home to Hope group, I told the, um, team that there are some things they can't call Chief Brackney for when they are trying to help people heal. I told them that in front of her. So at no point would I play with people's lives in that way. And it's really pissing me off that some people are using this time and this climate, some of the same people I've had to have conversations with about the fact that they think I have been participating and underpolicing this same community just a few weeks ago, will then come on and say things publicly as if I have any reason but to stand firm and fully grounded as I have been. And I'm saying it here, and I'm really intense, I know, and I'm really upset. But when you all talk about healing and the things that we have to do in this community, there are social services reports out there. Don't come to me talking about my understanding of equity and equality when you're talking about defund the police and move the dollars to social services or human services or Region 10 or any other place that has not participated in the healing of black people in this community, but have had their hands out for millions of dollars. I have attempted to be diplomatic, even though some people don't think so, during my tenure here. But if you want to start having true conversations, community level and staff level, we're gonna have them. So we're going to have some authentic conversations and I don't need any training. And I know exactly what is not working. And I know that some of the recommendations are also not the answer. And so as long as everybody's ready to have those real authentic conversations and really get to something meaningful, that's where we'll end. And I'll just end with that I've been having those conversations before I got here and I've been continuing. There is not one thing that I am ashamed of about my time on this council.
Mayor Walker, there's one other issue that got raised with my name attached to it, and I just wanted to comment briefly about my support for the CRB during the campaign last year. The vote to approve the CRB was taken on November fourth, which was the day before the election. And on that vote, in that vote, November fourth, council edited, amended, took out some things that had been in the original draft. I've said to everybody that I've talked to about this issue, starting in late November, had talked with Harold Foley, among others, and Mr. Heinecke. Both, I am not interested in trying to revisit and rehash things that other councils have done. I think it's much more important that we get the CRB up and running. Charlottesville has a terrible habit of making the perfect be the enemy of the good. And we never actually get around to doing anything because we spend all of our time wanting to redo everything. I've said all along, I'd like to see us go ahead, get the CRB running, see how it works. And then tweak it once we see what doesn't work. I will also point out that one thing that people often don't realize in the CRB is that it calls for the CRB to evaluate and comment on police policies, not just specific incidents. And most of the problems that people have with these, with this set of bylaws, they feel like they're not going to be able to address particular incidents. I think they ought to focus, if they focus more of their time on the policies, they might have a much more profitable use of that time. But that's again, something they'll have to look at once they get into it. So anyway, I just wanted to say, I want to see the CRB work. I want to see it get to work. Thank you.
And just to clarify on that point, because we have gotten some questions. We have, my understanding counsel was that we had given the okay for the CRB to meet when they were ready to meet and that, you know, Mayor Walker has been working with staff to get that set up. We, when we did that other broader boards and commissions decision making that the CRB, even though they hadn't convened yet, were one that I thought we had agreed to let begin convening. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding. They staff are working with scheduling that.
I just wanted to make sure the public was aware.
Yes, we are supposed to be meeting at the end of this month, but I know Max has sent that out to confirm a date, but it is the last week of this month that we are scheduling a meeting with the CRB.
All right, are there any other comments? Okay, so our break, so just, what happened, eight forty-five?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is everybody back?
I'm here.
All right, I called this meeting back to order. Next up, we have appropriation. To appropriate the coronavirus aid relief and economic security CARES Act funding. First of two readings. And Dr. Richardson. Well, sorry, I didn't.
Okay, I'm back. Thanks.
Sorry about that, I thought I saw you, um, saw you back. So it's the CARES Act, we are ready for that conversation.
Hold on one second. I'm trying to get, hold on one second. Okay, I'm sorry about that, I was trying to get back on to the screen. There, yes, I do have Chris Cullinan here to be able to present this document. But what I was gonna say before he actually begins his presentation is that we spent a significant amount of time putting this document together, although it was a short timeframe that we had to get it done. But what we did, we went to, we worked with all of our department directors. And we all sat down and talked about the amount of money that we got in for this funding, which was $4.1 million. And we spent a considerable amount of time in trying to make sure that all of our bases were covered in terms of what we needed throughout this process. And one of the things that we talked about, and as we mentioned, and was talked about by a number of the folks who spoke earlier, was what we're doing in terms of our human services and social services. And we did put, you know, a significant amount of funding in to those various areas that, that talk about our community support. But there were other areas as we look at in terms of our operational modifications, in terms of being able to bring our employees back into a safe environment. As you know, we have a lot of old buildings, and what we wanted to do was make sure that when our folks did come back to work, they came into a safe environment, and we were able to have things in place that would ensure them that they would be working in an environment where we would be able to provide, you know, those modifications. And we talked a little bit about that in terms of enhanced air filters and UV lights and, you know, hands-free devices throughout our facilities. So there's a number of different things in terms of our IT functions that pertain to us having these various meetings and what we're trying to do to be able to move forward as we continue to deal with COVID. And also, too, the help and support the, the, the business community in terms of providing grants for businesses to get back going. And then to support those that were struggling throughout this process, then also, too, to do some things within our commercial corridor. And with that said, you know, a lot of our folks in our communities work at these different businesses, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, the jobs that they do have, that they are able to maintain them, as well as for businesses to open back up so folks can go back to work. And that's most important. But, you know, the main thing is that we did put the money in those various areas, which came out to be about 3.7 million, and we left a contingency of about 424,000, which put us back to our total of 4.1 million. And the contingency basically is to provide us with some additional funds in case we fall short in various areas throughout this period of time that we had to spend this money now. We have to make sure that we spend all of it before the end of the year. And if those funds are not expended, we have to send them back. So, you know, as we talked with the council, we did our very best in terms of trying to spread this money out across our various departments and for them to be able to provide that to the community as well as our internal functions. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the council. Unless, Chris, you have something you want to add?
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. The only thing I would add is just reiterating some of the broad guidelines in terms of what the funds can be used for. Any necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. Expenses that were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27, 2020. And were incurred during the period beginning March 1, 2020 through December 30, 2020. And so obviously, those are some fairly, fairly wide parameters of allowable uses. I will note that one thing is cannot be explicitly used for is revenue replacement, can't be used for lost revenue. That being said, though, as you saw in the attachments with this agenda item, there were about twenty-some-odd pages of guidance from the Commonwealth and US Treasury. And so while we do have quite a bit of discretion over how these funds are used, there's still, there's a lot of, there's a lot of details in there. The various professional associations the staff belong to, this is a very hot topic of conversation in terms of what's allowable. What other folks are doing. These funds are subject to potential audit by either the federal government or the Commonwealth, that hasn't been spelled out yet. But we are certainly acting that way and ensuring that how we use these funds are documented and are appropriate as near as we can determine in terms of compliance with, with the CARES Act. I guess the other thing I would just offer as well is the time period involved. We have through the end of this calendar year. And certainly, in the last three months, we have some extensive experience with COVID-19. But, you know, one of the challenges of this pandemic is it's still happening, and there's still a lot. We still have a long ways to go. And certainly, some of the discussion this evening about around school reopenings, about a possible second wave of code that we hear about in the fall and the winter. There, there's a lot of unknowns, and I think, you know, we've tried to structure the appropriation away around these categories of funding, which attempts to strike a balance between being specific about what uses are being contemplated. But again, allowing some flexibility, just knowing that things do change. These estimates, as Dr. Richardson described, were, we spent a lot of time on, but we did it fairly quickly. And there are some, some unknowns even within those in terms of costs and availability of things. So again, we've tried to balance, you know, the way the appropriation is structured to provide some, some direction in terms of our strategy involving COVID-19. I think that's one of the other important things about this way those categories were developed. As Dr. Richardson mentioned, not only were they department directors, but these were folks who were staffing our critical incident management team during COVID-19. These were the folks heading up some of the various branches, dealing with logistics, operations, the community, economic development, those sorts of things. And so you know, to, you know, these are our subject matter experts, so to speak, in COVID-19 and the city strategy to deal with it. And so, you know, certainly their, their input was critical in ensuring that these funds are being pointed in the right direction based on the information that we have. And I guess the final thing I would just leave, leave on is, you know, $4.1 million is, is significant, is a significant amount of money, but bear in mind, an operation of our size with an annual general fund budget of about $180 million. These funds, you know, they're not, they're not gonna go very far. They're, they're certainly, they're, they're scarce, and we need to treat them as such and make sure that we are being as thoughtful and diligent in the way that we're, we're spending them and the way that we plan to spend them.
I guess I
I'm sorry.
I know. It was more of a clarifying question. So, as you said, Chris, like, these, these things are kind of estimates right now. At what point between now, and obviously you want to do it well ahead of December 31st, you kind of reassess and say, you know what, some of these things haven't shaken out, and then do we have to then do another reallocation or reappropriation to make those adjustments?
So, as, as soon as, as these funds go through their second reading, which Dr. Richardson will talk about here in a few minutes. You know, some of these are ready to go, and I would certainly point to the community support and the economic, the business support categories as being ready to go, because we've been doing those things during COVID-19. So those are, are pretty much, we can pretty much launch those as soon as we get your all's approval. The other ones will certainly start as soon as possible, and some of those are even underway. Some of the facility things have begun, some of the IT things have begun. So you know, this is certainly going to be an ongoing effort, and the appropriation is written in a way which grants the city manager some discretion and some flexibility into how these dollars are allocated. Just recognizing again that, you know, this is a bit of a fluid situation, and there are some uncertainties coming, but it certainly gives the council and the community an idea of the direction that we're going in and the order of magnitude and the priorities.
And just like Chris mentioned, that we are coming to you tonight with the first reading, but this needs two readings. So what we're asking is that we come back within the next, I guess it would be three days to be able to do it. That we come back and do the approval for the second reading. Because as Mr. Cullinan mentioned, is that, you know, there are a significant amount of these dollars that need to go right now and need to be able to fund these various initiatives that we have included within this list of items. Also, too, above and beyond that, I, I also would like to have, like to bring Cackey on to talk more about the community support in terms of our human services, because I know that that was a question from a few of our folks that joined us earlier, I was asking about that. We'll talk about that strategy and what we were trying to do with that.
And we have a, the closed session scheduled for Thursday, so we should be able to do it then. Mr. Blair, or no?
Tuesday.
Do we come into open session to do that?
Yes, Mayor Walker, that would fulfill the three-day requirement for the appropriations. So Thursday, you could in open session do your second reading.
All right, so we'll just work with you all and Dr. Richardson to figure out the best time for that meeting. We just have, um, we were still in the closed session, getting the update from you all today before 5 o'clock. So I just had Ms. Thomas just post, you know, to notice a new meeting. But we, from 11:30 to 5, but it could be any time within that timeframe, and then we were gonna make sure that she, you know, cleared that up, but we just needed to talk about it as a council. But just so that we could have the option for the meeting. All right, so
I think Ms. Dimick was gonna
Yeah.
That's right.
Hi, good evening, everybody. When we were looking at sort of what a human services request would be for the CARES Act funds, we recognized that there are so many community agencies that have really risen during this challenge to meet the needs of our community members, people who have gone above and beyond. And many, many people and agencies who have figured out a way to flex their service delivery models, usually without volunteers, and have found a way to really closer to the problem and not away. And so it would be nearly impossible to identify all of the people who have contributed to the improving the well-being, and it will continue to be contributing to the well-being of our community through December. We looked at what basic needs were. We looked at housing, feeding, emergency financial assistance, and we started with sort of baseline. Knowing that this crisis is longstanding and it's gonna cut deep, and so we, we need to sort of shore up our, our, our basic services, or what our sort of safety net services would be. And for me, that fell into three categories, supporting the move of our most vulnerable community members, the homeless folks into hotels for as long as we can sustain. And, and so that reflects the number in there to contribute to that number. That's not the total cost of it through December. And then recognizing the agencies who have moved their sort of service delivery models, volunteers, they're supporting all kinds of things to provide food services directly to people who are hungry in our community. Really kind of amazing. And then finally, to provide some additional dollars into the emergency resource hotline, which we anticipate would be nearly exclusively used for rental relief. Particularly as our, this sort of moratorium begins to suspend or sunset in June, maybe in July for some. We'll begin to see evictions or the flood of evictions in August and September. I think it's really critical that we have as many pools of flexible funds to support rental relief for, to keep people in housing as long as we can. We know the economy is not gonna rebound just because we decided to reopen. So I think it's gonna be really important that we try to do all we can to keep people in housing. So that's, that's the rationale for our request and the three sort of broad buckets that I request.
And one of the comments that are the questions that I asked Dr. Richardson, this operational modifications category with this $1,164,000. I just, without knowing what that was based on, I would recommend if we were not gonna move more money in the category, the other categories, which I, I mean, in, I think the community supports for me would be first, then employee support, and then business support. I just think we should strengthen all three of those categories. And I understand, you all know how I feel about being in safe spaces, safe physical spaces, and making sure that things are clean. But, and if we, and because there wasn't an itemized, just itemized estimates of that amount, it was just hard for me to wrap my head around that 28.2% of the dollars going towards that. And even if we put more money in the reserves to be able to allocate based on needs, instead of directing it directly towards there, I would feel more comfortable there. But I fully acknowledge that I'm one of five votes.
Well, maybe it'd be helpful if we understood more deeply that category, and if there are any things that we and if there are any things that we, that maybe we could deprioritize within that larger category of operations.
Oh, or Marty, you want to talk a little bit more about that? I know, as I mentioned before, that we, like I said, we have a number of buildings that are pretty old in terms of the different things that we have. And trying to make those as safe as possible for the return of the employees. But, you know, um, we could talk a little bit more about why we selected those things. But as you can see, um, when you look at us trying to maintain those buildings as well as having folks to be able to clean those on a specific day and make sure that it's ready for the forthcoming week. We wanted to make sure that we had enough money in there to be able to supply, you know, those buildings with the necessary cleanings that they needed, as well as to change out the various things throughout those facilities, as well as with the filters, uh, as well as try to ensure that, you know, we're not touching everything all the time. So, um, we were trying to make things touchless in many categories that we were, uh, you know, to decrease the probability of outbreak within one of our buildings or within one of our facilities that would impact us and turn us back to where we were when we were in the, um, the beginning stages of the COVID-19 virus, the onset. So I'll turn it over to Paul. He can explain a little bit more.
Sure. I'd be happy to, Dr. Richardson. So I'll just go through some of the more expensive line items that were in that list. We had some access control and that was to make sure that the public had control access into the building and was properly screened for infection control. There was a little bit of money in there for that. We had about $300,000 in Plexiglas and workspace modification. So we're essentially taking all of the buildings and using CDC guidelines for, for spacing inside the building so that we're, um, setting up each department with the proper spacing for workstations as well as Plexiglas to make sure there's distance between the public and the staff. That was about 300,000. 50,000 of it was for CDC recommended hand washing stations, plumbed both inside and outside of our city facilities while weather permits. You can see those if you go into, let's say Sam's Club, they have these hand washing stations for staff. We also wanted to have some on, on the outside of the buildings for, um, for the general public. One of the big line items was $322,000 for air ventilation, UV sanitizing light installation. And again, this is taking our existing HVAC, uh, going from a MERV seven to a MERV 14 filter. If you go into a hospital, into an operating room, they're MERV 16. So we're approaching something that's hospital grade. But again, is recommended by the CDC in terms of catching the particulates that may have COVID virus on them and continuing to refresh the ventilation with clean and sanitized air with the UV being a backup that would kill anything that would be residual. And again, the, that number isn't based on an estimate, it's an estimate. It's not based on a contractor's estimate or, um, or a, a bit of any kind. So we just used our institute's institutional knowledge to put together the best numbers that we could currently. We did have some elevator virus mitigations and that's nanoseptic button covers, things like that. Faucet retrofits to touchless faucets. And then one of the big line items was 287,000 for enhanced cleaning of facilities. And that's the government buildings, the police and fire departments. Uh, and that's about 65% of the assignable space. Should we encounter somebody that comes in and they're exposed and we need to clean the space? That would be primarily through our contract that was, was awarded earlier last month. Going down the list, there's a lot of small line items that do add up. So we had cleaning station, just to have cleaning stations and supplies is about 10,000. Signage, we have about 5,000 and that's just basically laying out the social distancing in our operating procedures within the, the different facilities. Contracting of outdoor restrooms. So this is one, you know, we're trying to open the parks, restrooms, but they have to be cleaned on an hourly basis. And so three months of that was about $9,000. Uh, and then also increased dumpster service because people are using our park system to take their carryout and they need somewhere to go and, and eat their food. So we've encountered an increase, an uptick in trash at all of our locations. So that's sort of a rundown. I'd be happy to dive deep into that if you'd like.
All right. So that was helpful for me.
I guess I'm just curious the timeline of when some of these things you're not estimating might come to fruition so that you know if we can free up some dollars to allocate to these other priority areas.
So basically on this list can be in short order implemented. We have either contracts already in place or through our purchasing options or procurement cooperative contracts. We can go ahead and do a lot of what we have envisioned in terms of making these modifications. We have our in-house staff and facilities development and facilities maintenance working on the reopening plans, that $300,000 for space reallocation and understanding what each department's needs are going to be. Haven't quite been laid out yet as part of our reopening strategy. So as we move forward, we're going to be meeting, uh, well, Deputy Chief Powers has already been meeting with the department heads, but we're going to walk through and understand their operational needs and then have that match what our infectious control requires of us. So we don't have that quite laid out yet, but as we start to reopen, more evident.
Thank you. So we'll get an update at some point about the, where, where everything ended up being spent. Or no?
Yes, we'll keep a tally of this and we're happy to report back on any frequency you like.
And this could be a part, this could be a part of our monthly updates that we're going to be starting, following the adoption of the budget that we said that we were going to be doing as a city. So you know where we're at in terms of our overall revenue expenditures.
So I, just for me, any money that can be spent to especially, I mean, even, you know, we're on the jail board together. They even paid, um, the hazards pay of increasing the hourly, um, the wage by $2. So anything that, that we can, you know, do to make sure that employees who have, you know, had to put themselves on the line, the ways, in a way that some of us haven't had to understand that we appreciate, um, you know, their work. And any time that we can get towards whatever that looks like for them. And if this is a way that we do that, that $400,000, that was, um, my concern with that. Would that even, you know, be enough to, um, for past support over the past few months? And
You know, we talked about in terms of being able to do that, that, that is, and we're still looking at that, to make sure that that is eligible spin, uh, which will help us offset the overall cost to the general fund by looking at our public safety side, utilizing those funds for that. And then also on our other side in terms of the general fund, our, the other part of our workforce to be able to provide them with some type of, uh, pay for, uh, working through, uh, this COVID-19 pandemic.
All right. Are there any other questions?
One
Go, go ahead, Lloyd.
One comment I wanted to make and just, uh, being the nitpicky editor kind of person that I am, on page 34 of the notes, you've left $300 out of the technology, uh, number. According to the spreadsheet you gave us, it was 636,300, not 636 even. And if you add up the numbers, you'll see that you've got expenditures of totaling 776, needs another $300 in there. So that should get fixed when we actually, before we make the resolution.
You got that, Chris?
You see what I mean?
Dante, come here.
Bottom of page 34.
Yes, sir.
And we'll clean that up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So any further discussion for council?
I was just kind of curious, is it just for the public weigh-in that we're having the separation of we're not just going to do the second reading tonight? Is that the reason?
The, I'm sorry, counselor, can you repeat that about the second reading?
Sometimes when we have, for things we want to get going quickly, if there's, you know, if we have a four-fifths super majority that is in favor of that, we've done that. And I'm just curious because it sounds like we're going to be now meeting on Thursday to, to do this. And I'm just considering staff's time of engaging with us in that way. And I'm just kind of curious of the thought there.
No, that's, that's a great question. And, um, if you look at the city code, the, the provision about ordinances also says that three days must pass between the introduction of an ordinance and its adoption. However, that specific code section does provide that a four-fifths vote, can in fact waive the second reading. The interesting thing, and actually, uh, Mr. Cullen and I talked about this before, uh, this meeting last week, the appropriations provision within the city code talks about one appropriations over $1,000 and, um, having to have three days between the introduction and the adoption by council of appropriations over $1,000. And, um, there is not a four-fifths waiver requirement or waiver provision in that, uh, specific city code section.
Thank you. Learn something new every day.
And I would prefer to make sure that citizens have
No, I, I agree. I'm fine. I was just kind of curious of the thoughts. That's all.
Okay. And you said over $1,000? Yeah. I just want to make sure I have the number. I'm going to read it, but
Yes, Mayor Walker, um, if you give me one second, it is city code section, two dash nine eight B. That's the $1,000 appropriation provision that requires the three day, uh, interlude. But if you want to look at two dash nine seven, you will see that for or general ordinances, there is the four fifths waiver requirement, waiver provision if the council wants to exercise.
Thank you. So do we need to still, um, say that this is moving to July 20th? Or do we need to say, change the date to, um, Thursday?
I think Thursday, June 18th.
All right. So just, um, that modification and do we need to vote on that?
No, ma'am.
So that this will be moved, the second reading will be moved to June 18th?
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you all. Next we have resolution, the approval of third, um, of the third amended grant agreement. The Charleston Supplemental Rental Assistant Program and it's one reading.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, I'm Brenda Kelly, redevelopment manager. And this item is in front of you for a couple of purposes. We come back to you pretty much annually to, um, extend the time of performance of the agreement. Because you approve funding on an annual basis, we put the funding in place and we put the timing of performance based on the fiscal year in place. Also, what we typically do is housing authority comes in front of you and gives you an update on the program. And we have those staff, uh, here with us tonight and they can give you an update on the program. And then we're going to ask you to approve the amended agreement that sets those other items in place.
All right. Ms. Jackson, are you?
Yes, ma'am. Good, good evening. I'm Ms. Jackson. I work for the Charleston Redevelopment and Housing Authority. I'm an assistant asset manager there. I also run, um, CSRCAP program, the Charleston Supplemental Rental Assistant Program. I do have a PowerPoint that I put together to show the numbers that we serviced for this year.
And that PowerPoint's on your screen and you can tell me when you want to advance to the next slide.
You can go right to the next slide. This is just the intros. So this is, um, the purpose of Charleston Supplemental Rennal Assistance. It's just came off the actual agreement, what we're doing, um, far as trying to assist homeless and low income families to find, um, stable housing for them, for themselves. So this just is a background of what the program actually does. We can go to the next slide. This right here is our fair market. This is how we determine, uh, a person's eligibility status and their voucher status, voucher status as far as their family size. And this is the income requirement for each family based on the people in your family and how we determine the 50%, the 30% and the 80%. And these all come from heart. And this is just the occupation status is how we determine households and how many bedroom sizes per household. This is the year-end review. So since we started the program in 2018, we've able to house 141 families with, through this program. As of today, we have 91 families receiving assistance. We have 56 families that live in the city of Charlottesville, 35 that lives in the Almar County area. And this is the breakdown of the program tiers of how we got the people who are actually in, based on the criteria that was given to us through the grant and how many we currently assisted. So self-sufficiencies, the minimum requirement was 40 people, 40 families. We've actually got 45 families that's in a self-sufficient program. Homelessness, it was supposed to be 15, we actually have 30. HCV, we have 45, we actually have 17 that's actually, so we have 92 people in the, in the program. But one family is actually, um, currently looking. So our goal is to keep 100 people in this program. And this is the breakdown of the spinaches that we've done throughout, um, July 1st of last year to June of this year.
And could the, are you going to talk about the increases? Just want to highlight those by
Increases of why, why increases because more family got into, got in the program. So each month, um, it increases and then some of them decreases because we do an annual review every year. Some families have actually worked their way off the program. Some families have actually, um, been taken out of the program due to program violations as far as being evicted from their house, their households. And we weren't notified until, to help them, to assist them until after the fact.
I'd also like to point out though, we're anticipating, um, an increase in the funding per month because of folks that have lost jobs. We need the increase of the rental assistance payments. So we are anticipating and looking at those numbers now to make sure that we have those covered. So we are anticipating and looking at those numbers now to make sure that we have those covered.
So the goal is for C-Script to, to add more people on the list and bring more people out. So right now, we have a currently of a hundred and four applications on our waitlist. My goal is to pull at least between twenty to thirty more applicants in it over the next thirty to sixty days. To see if they're eligible for the program. And that's to continue to work with Jefferson, Dave Jefferson, Thomas Jefferson, um, area coalition. DSS and P housing, I mean PBCC. To get their girls in, to make sure their, their numbers are capped with the program's requirement, requirements. There's a possibility five to ten of our families just go ready to move over to our regular federal funded, um, section eight program. Within the next thirty to sixty days. One of the goals I wanted to do was to create a survey for the current participants in the landlords to get the feedback of how this program is actually helping. Families benefit from this program.
To answer any questions you might have, otherwise, we're asking you to approve the third amended grant agreement. To keep the Charlottesville supplemental rental assistance program to continue to provide services.
So, oh, did someone else have in, any questions?
Yeah, just. It's something we've discussed at other meetings, but in terms of the expectation that. You know, the amount of money needed will go up because over the next several months, you know, we can anticipate. Job losses or people who aren't able to, to return back to work. Do you feel. Really comfortable and certain enough that that cushion is large enough to prevent the risk of anyone. Having to be kicked off the program and, and, and face the situation that that would create should. Again, the economy not rebound well at all in terms of the amount of job losses.
I, I think I can answer that. So fortunately, we have not yet accessed the current year funding. The fiscal year nineteen twenty funding. So this agreement in front of you will release those funds. And additionally, it will release the funds that you just approved. So we have what we could say is a significant amount of funding available. And with our current just rough estimate projections that John Sales looks at. We think we'll be very safe at least through the end of the calendar year to be able to cover the increase in rents. For the existing folks that are housed and the one family that is looking. And then with the housing authority staff, we'll continue to monitor what that funding looks like as we go through the next couple months. To see if then housing authority will be able to look at adding additional households to be able to go out and look for housing.
And a couple of questions that I have, and this is one of the programs that I just wanted us to look at. Not this year, but it's just, you know, thinking about the hundred and four people on the waitlist is. You know how long those individuals have been on the waitlist?
Since about August of last year.
August. I just think this is one of the things that we're gonna have to, I know the funding wasn't used. For the year that we're currently in. But if we're talking about, you know, the commitment that we may have to. That fireworks scare me, sorry. But that we may have to. You know, consider increasing dollars at some point annually. To ensure that more families have access. Or as I had this conversation with Ms. Kelly just maybe last month. Or, or so about the fact that if. We know that it will be very challenging for families' income to increase for a lot of people. And I know there's been some success there, but every year, our AMI. Increased to where it's almost a hundred thousand dollars and just to think about the support that families are going to need there. And if this is not something that we are, you know, increasing. Then we will have to, you know, think seriously about what time limits. You know, would look like because there are, are other families who could benefit, you know, for, for, from the program. Even if it's just they're getting a two, three year, five year, whatever we decided on, you know, support. And then there, the next set of family members are not, are able to rotate in. And then whatever the time limit in between for them to be able to, you know, reapply. But we have to, that's one thing that I think is missing from here now is, you know, that, that factor. So that's something that if we were not in a pandemic, that I would have been, you know, discussing. But I definitely want us to discuss at some point. But I think ultimately, it would be increasing the dollar amounts. So that we are able to support more families until they no longer qualify. And at some point, we may have to step outside of the HUD limits too. And that's just something that we may have to think about and discuss.
I know there was talk in another meeting at some point. That currently C-Script is following the HUD guidelines as to applicants. With criminal backgrounds and things like that. I just, I would also hope that at some point, we might wanna look at broadening that. I know we've got plenty of people on the waitlist. But there are, we do have some donut holes in our safety net. For people coming out of incarceration who really don't qualify for any sort of housing assistance. And I would just. Also, I don't know, I don't know if with C-Script, but I know with, with the HUD dollars that if somebody comes home. To live with their family and they've had certain incarceration incidents on their record. They would not be allowed to live there. And I just, I just hope that we can be looking at that as well to try to make that a bit more open. I mean, I also know that landlords have, you know, they have rights to, to put limits on certain things as well. But yeah, so that's that.
And that was one of my questions to the eviction. Is there a way that we can include that in the MOU or whatever goes out with the landlords? That they will notify us so we can attempt to help mitigate issues like that? Cuz clearly it must not have been related to the finances if there was support. So is there anything that we can do on that end to help strengthen that so that people are not being put out without notification?
I communicate with, with a lot of landlords, asking them that. And one landlord particularly told me, well, it was the residence. It was the residence responsibility to notify. I told her, no ma'am, it's your responsibility to notify me because you receive subsidies from us. So it's your notification to notify me. So where, if I knew I could have stepped in and tried to help. The situation, what was going on and try to just, so their person went in back out on the street. But it was actually at the end where it was too late. They'd already served their eviction. Nobody was notified. They were set out, so.
And we also, a month or so ago, there, a citizen that was concerned that there were. A lot of families that were at risk of losing their vouchers. Has that? Was that an issue recently?
No, ma'am.
Two quite, one does, in terms of. Does HUD mandate that you need to follow their guidelines in terms of who can qualify for the program in order to. Like receive funding from them as part of it? In other words, like what kind of constraints is HUD imposing on us? And then two, I know this is a bigger discussion that's gone on in the past, but so just some of. Here's some of the dynamics in terms of number of landlords in Charlottesville who are even willing to participate in the program. And how many people are still having to go out into Admiral County because of that shortage of, of, of local landlords participating?
The first question, HUD, where they was, the guideline stated to mandate, running just like our section eight. So we use, we use our section eight guidelines, which is mandated by HUD. So that's why we use that cuz the, the program was supposed to be monitored and ran just like our section eight. Far as landlords. They, they have, it's a lot of people in the city. It's. A lot of people want, they come to a barrier, like you said, they don't wanna rent to them. So they have to wait and go to, go to the county. And I, I mean, we have ownership. I talked to a whole lot of landlords in the city, but it's, then it comes up with the backgrounds and. They don't wanna rent to that person cuz there's something on their background or something on their credit report. And I'm at a loose end because I can't help them anymore.
And even with the distance, with seventy percent of the guaranteed, you know. There is still that one credit, it's so sad.
And I think part of it is because it's a lot of, lot of multifamily like apartments. And some people don't wanna live in apartments. There's more opportunity in the county for maybe a duplex or a single family home than it is in the city. Most of the people that get the vouchers in the city, they always end up at Mallside, Ryo Hill and stuff like that.
And is it. Because of the lack of the housing type that best matches their needs not being available in the city or just. Or landlords just saying, you know, or maybe it's the landlords who fit that housing type also saying, you know, I won't, I won't take it.
Yeah, I think it's a combination.
Yeah.
And most of the housing is in the same area. It's, it's just like a cluster. They all end up either on that Prospect Avenue curve that have the duplex or something like that.
And that's, you know, what I'm talking about with our developments. This is the type of when, I know, you know. The, Mr. Blair, but when we're giving people SUPs, if we are guaranteeing like access to. Like this pro, you know, that if they are gonna build, get a hundred additional housing. That they are gonna commit to, you know, twenty housing from people from this. For people from this program, things like that. Those are the type of discussions that I'm interested in having. So then when we were talking about, we need more housing in Charlotte so that we're not just meeting the needs of. The upper income people and we know there's almost no diversity. That upper income category is almost always white and upper income. So there's no diversity in race or income there. And that's why, you know, I'm usually pushing those conversations. When we're talking about development, because we are creating more housing, but who are we creating that housing for? That's a different conversation, I understand, but I just wanted to bring it up. During this moment because it's clearly a major issue and all the things we vote for just because what someone could do by right. It's clearly not helping us solve the housing crisis for our most vulnerable citizens. And it's just a perfect time for me to just say that.
Well, and I think, I think that question of units or landlords. Not accepting them or the unit type not existing locally, certainly for us as a council. As part of our housing strategy as well as some of the legal changes that have been made this general assembly session. Because I think the challenge is. What policy tools do we have access to that can allow us to make that the reality? And I don't know the answer.
Well, I, I would offer that again, and I know that. The Housing Advisory Committee is taking a look at the recently enacted authorization. Concerning allowing Charlottesville to write its own affordable housing dwelling unit ordinance. Giving it the same authority as the county. And I do know that the, again, the hack is looking at that. And the planning commission will probably look at that before the council gets to. Take a look and, and make some changes and enact something and. It's, it's probably important. Good thing we're having the conversation that. As the comp plan and as the housing strategy are developed in the new process. And why not give a plug to that as well and encouraging people to participate in this. Interactive process that have been set up by NDS and the consultants. It's probably important to Mayor Walker and Counselor Payne's point to use that process as well. To look at policy tools that can be woven into both the comp plan and the housing strategy. To look at more voucher availability in units throughout the city and other affordable housing strategies.
Are there any other comments or questions? Oh, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Green, thank you. And Ms. Kelly, thank you for your, for the update. We appreciate it. And thank you for helping us house our most vulnerable citizens. So next we have.
Are you ready for the motion? I move we. Move we adopt. I thought I had it, I'm sorry. I move for approval of the third amended grant agreement of the Charlottesville supplemental rental assistance program. Resolution.
Was there a second? Okay, any further discussion? Alright, Ms. Thomas, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Smook? Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries five the. Vote. Thank you all again. Next, we have the resolution allocation of the Charlotte Affordable Housing Fund. For programs in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Hope everyone's doing well. My name is John Sales and I'm the Housing Program Coordinator. So we've gone over the programs before, so I'll just give a very short, brief description of each one. And then I'll talk about the discussion we had with the hack at the virtual meeting. And I'll open up for any questions that you all may have. So we are proposing three programs. The first program is a short term homeless rental assistance program. That program is proposed to assist twenty seven families for approximately six months with housing. In that we allow two months of that to be in a hotel or a extended stay situation. And we do have the Office of Economic Development prepared to operate that program. The next program is a landlord rental assistance program. That is, that is a three month loan program that we're providing to landlords. Who have individuals in their property that were unable to pay rent due to COVID nineteen pandemic. That is classified as a forgivable loan. We have it structured so it's a loan for the landlords where we would get additional month. Before a landlord can evict it, he tenet. uh, before a landlord can evict it, he tenet after the assistance has stopped. Uh, so then that gives, uh, the tenant and possibly an organization time to find some other assistance to help out the community. Um, we have that proposed at a three-month program so we can, um, help approximately fifty-four families. If we have less families apply for it, then we can be, we can, we can help more families, uh, for a longer period of time. Uh, the other program is a short-term re-entry housing assistance program. And this program is for individuals that were incarcerated, uh, before COVID nineteen and during COVID nineteen, they were released, uh, during the pandemic. Uh, so this is going to provide them some housing assistance for up to six months. Uh, we have that, uh, um, outline to help about twenty-seven families as well. That program is also going to be operated, uh, by the Office of Economic Development. And we added in that program some requirements like, um, uh, participating in Home to Hope, uh, because we found that that program is a great success when it has some case managed, case management and some additional services tied to it to help the individuals, uh, throughout their time, um, and getting adjusted back to being in the free world. Uh, um, last program is a home, homeowners mortgage assistance program. And it's a loan, uh, that is, uh, extended loan, so it's a deferred loan. Um, I currently have it proposed for a sixty-month loan term. Um, and the reason we have it proposed for a sixty-month loan term is we want to try to get some of the money back, uh, because some individuals are gonna rebound a lot faster than some others. So we want to get some money back in the community where we can reinvest it and some permanent affordable housing. And I saw that as being possibly the best, uh, program out of the four to where you had a situation where you can reinvest that fund, funds back into the community. Um, during the meeting with the hack, um, the hack, uh, voted on, um, extending the loan to, so it's not due until after the original mortgage is paid off. I have a little bit of issue with that because we are looking at providing funds to more, a wide ranging of individuals. Um, some of them could have been making two or three hundred thousand dollars before the pandemic and some, uh, were barely making ends meet before the pandemic. Uh, so those individuals that were making possibly the higher incomes are gonna rebound a lot faster. Uh, so I didn't wanna, uh, make it so everyone has the same basic term. So I added in, in the original language of being able to renew it additional ten years if you can show financial hardship or you can't afford to pay it back. And I thought that was a, um, a little bit given, getting what you can get, but also ensuring that you're not putting any, a household in, um, a bad predicament and having to choose between paying the city back or putting food on the table and continuing paying their mortgage. So I guess that's something that City Council will have to resolve, um, because that was a, uh, a sticking point on staff's side and a, uh, different sticking point for the hack. So I'll use that as my presentation and I'll open up for any questions that you may have and I can answer them for you.
Well, um, thank you, um, for the, um, presentation and thank you for the work that you put into, um, you know, coming up with, um, these options and presenting it to, um, to us. I for one, understand that we are talking about, um, the fact that we live in a community, um, with the, um, AMI of over ninety-three thousand dollars a year. Um, and that we, that some families, um, who are, um, homeowners, um, you know, make, um, a, a lot less than that. So I do support the, um, you know, um, you know, defer, deferring the loan and then giving families and options if they can, um, show, um, that there are, um, some challenges, so. Other counselors, what are your, um, thoughts there?
I know there, uh, there've been some email exchanges tonight, um, uh, in, in terms, I mean, I think the, from my fuzzy memory of, of the hack meeting, I think it was kind of, it's kind of a smaller technical point, I thought, in terms of how, um, how the program may interact with, with other things going on far beyond City Council and then trying to potentially provide some additional flexibility in, in terms of, because this is one program where it's harder to know ahead of time exactly what the need is gonna be and if it could provide some more flexibility if the need is lower than predicted to reallocate it to other areas. Quite, quite frankly, in my memory, it was, it was a pretty small technical point. Um, I, I don't have any problem going with staff's recommendation, um, i- in terms of how to move forward. I don't think it was a, uh, major foundational thing, um, for the programs at all. Um, so I'll just throw that out there, I'm, I'm fine accepting what staff has recommended to us. And likewise, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Sales and staff for working on this. Um, I think, you know, I think it's a very strong set of programs and obviously the frustration is just anything we do, the amount of need that there's gonna be in the community is gonna be significantly greater than the amount of resources we have available. And even this, which is stopping the bleeding in a way that's necessary, is still depleting our ability to make, you know, major, capital investments in building new affordable housing. I think this is still the best option in front of us, given the crisis going on. But it just makes, you know, this larger crisis that much harder just because of everything going on with the pandemic. So, yeah, um, we're just gonna need a lot more support from the state and federal government, um, to, to, to meet this full need unfortunately. But again, support staff's recommendations and I think this is, um, the best path forward, given bad options in front of us.
And I will add that, um, that the hack in, uh, city staff, we do agree that if other funding sources do become available, we'll be looking at those, um, that take off, take over some of the burden from the CAF, uh, because we do know that there's an affordable housing issue well before the pandemic and it's gonna be one well after the pandemic is over. Um, so we do understand that and we are looking at that. We're looking at every funding opportunity there are, but, um, all of them are very, very small amounts for what the need is gonna be in a community. And a lot of them are looking at the region instead of just our central, um, just Charlottesville itself. So, um, that's what we're seeing and, uh, CAC and I were talking about it last week, of what some potential funding could look like from the state. Um, and it was, uh, regional funding. Um, and it was, uh, barely enough to fund one of the programs that I've recommended. And it was for the entire region and not just for Charlottesville itself.
I have a, um, Mr. Blair, we, um, be able to attach, um, AMI to, um, the families who would have to pay this back? Or if we offer it to, i- if any family has to pay it back, would it, all families have to? Is it legal to say that if you're under, let's say sixty percent of the AMI, that this could be forgivable or anything like that?
Yeah, let me, um, the authority is in, uh, section fifty point seven of the city charter. And you know, and looking at that, um, I think there is some, some ability to look at that enabling legislation and make something like you're describing. Um, you know, because this is, this is much more a power about grants to low and moderate income people. And there's not like, you know, it, it's not as, uh, spelled out now. Again, that's the legal authority and I do think it's fairly broad, looking at just the city charter. But I'd, I'd be interested if, if Mr. Sales has thoughts on the practicality of that and the administration of that. He, you know, even if it is legally, um, permissible, with kind of the broad authority, if he has thoughts on the administration of that, if it's possible.
I think that's something that, that's possible, but I think it's important that we word it so it's, uh, pre-COVID. Because a lot of the individuals that are gonna be applying for this are gonna be classified as eighty percent or lower. And a lot of them are gonna be like fifty or sixty percent or lower and still, uh, qualify. And they were having head incomes where they weren't qualified for any of these programs. So if you're gonna do it that way, I think it's important to classify the, uh, AMI before COVID, before the pandemic, before all the layoffs. Otherwise, everyone that applies is probably going to have a loan that's, uh, not gonna be paid off because they're eighty percent AMI or lower now.
And I'm really thinking about at the time when people would be, um, when the time limit would occur, that they would have to pay, you know, they would be up to pay this back. That's what I was thinking. If at that point, if that's something that we could, um, could look at. But it's something just to think about and
Sorry.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Just to remind us all with, with, what are those time limits? Is it thirty years or?
Uh, we're ten years, so sixty, sixty months. So I, I, I don't think that's a bad, um, bad idea, uh, to do it that way, um, as proposed by the mayor. But then you are saying that the money's not gonna come back, uh, to be reinvested and that's a decision that you all can make.
Well, maybe, Mr. Blair, will we have to, do we have to make that decision now or could we make the decision? Because we were talking about, again, we would be, we would need to know because we could be, we can't bind future councils to change course, right? But they could decide to vote.
Well, one thing I would, uh, suggest is, you know, tonight is just the allocation of the funds, um, to these specific programs. I think maybe what might be advisable is, um, for Mr. Sales, if, if the council votes to allocate the funds tonight, um, for Mr. Sales to work with, um, the hack and, and others to come back with a proposal based on what you've suggested tonight, Mayor Walker, that, um, would be more the administration side, more policy side rather than the fiscal side tonight. But, um, that might be my suggestion.
And somewhat related to that, I know we've, we've had this conversation already some, um, but just for, for the public's sake, what does it sort of look like in terms of, you know, we can assume for all these programs, the number of people who apply, more people will apply than there's the money that exists to meet all the need of everyone who applied. So what does it sort of look like to prioritize which applications get approved? If more people apply, then there's the ability to, to, to meet?
Uh, so what we're really looking at for, uh, a majority of the programs, uh, besides the, uh, landlord rental assistance program and the, uh, homeowner mortgage assistance program, uh, for the first two, we're really looking at who are the most vulnerable, uh, to COVID nineteen. Um, and then after that, we're looking at families, families with children, uh, as being the, uh, second priority. Um, and what, what we're looking at for the landlord rental assistance program, we're, we're really trying to protect the, uh, landlords who have, uh, who have affordable units. Um, and, uh, they're depending, they're barely making enough to cover the cost of the unit. So we really want to make sure they're gonna get opportunities to access these funds. Uh, so what I've been throwing around and it hasn't gone to the hack yet, uh, the meeting, uh, just talking about the program in general took up the entire time, um, of the hack meeting. So we did not talk about, uh, prioritizing individuals and, um, families for the programs. But what I'm looking at is like the first ten days of the program and it's only available for landlords who are renting the unit as affordable before the pandemic. Um, so we're really taking care of the landlords who have affordable units, who are committed to affordable housing in Charlottesville. Um, and then after that, it opens up, uh, to, uh, landlords who weren't renting it affordable, but they have, uh, families in those units. Um, so that's what we are looking at for that program. And for the homeowner mortgage assistance, we're looking at the low-income families before COVID nineteen as having a priority, um, for that program. But like I said, none of these have gone in front of the hack. We didn't have much time, uh, after we approved the programs themselves. And I know that was something that the council, uh, wanted to see, um, based upon the two-two ones we had.
I just want to bring this up, um, that aside from the moral issue of doing our best as a city to take care of people, to help people who are already living close to the edge, um, it is a finance, it is in the best interest of the city's financial health, to also do that. It's much more expensive to rehouse somebody once they've become homeless versus it is to keeping them in housing. Um, and I mean, there's, there's, there's boundless studies and financial papers that, that prove this evidence. This, I can't quote any right now, but this is all very much. And I, I know fellow counselors and know this and agree with this, I just wanted to, you know, put that out there.
Yeah, no, I agree, um, with you.
And, uh, again, it will, I, I agree a hundred percent, but like so many other things that, you know, we're, we're gonna need to over the coming years, think about the money that is now, could have gone to lot acquisitions, building new affordable housing, um, and, and how to, how to catch up there now that we're doing, which is the best move we have to try and stop the bleeding. But, um, it doesn't mean the, the need that existed before COVID nineteen goes away, obviously. But that is, that's something we can't solve tonight.
I'm just trying to get a sense for a timeline here. So if we're just approving right now the, the programs and their funding allocations, and then other decisions are gonna be made, I think are all of our goals is to make sure that we get this in to the hands of the folks who can really exercise these dollars the most, I need them most. And so I guess I'm just kind of curious of how, what this timeline is gonna look like, for when we can ultimately get to a process where they can be, the applications can be vetted and, and dollars can be put out there.
Uh, so we were looking at the beginning of July is where we could get the funding up, get everything set up, uh, with the Office of Economic Development. We're still currently looking, um, in-house to see what we can do about the homeowner mortgage assistance program. Uh, but that may be a program that has to go out, um, that we have to get support from a nonprofit or, um, enter another government agency, a quality government agency, uh, to operate. Um, but we're still looking at the beginning of July. Uh, so, uh, if you all would like, uh, for the, um, the admin portion to come back for city council approval, uh, we can do that. But I, I don't know if it's required, but if, uh, that's what the city council would like, we could get that on the agenda, um, in the future. But that's just gonna slow down the process of getting the funding on the street, I believe.
That's what I was getting at, I just, if we can kind of resolve some things tonight, I think it would probably be preferred. I don't want you to come and wait on us.
And if it's not approved, then maybe it's something that we can do two-two ones for and then put out, put something out, a release or something, or have a public meeting with the hack and then, um, put something out with the city council two-two ones then. Um, or it's whatever you all would like, though. Well, I'm just trying to get the money out there, it's been, um, we've been in this for almost three months now.
I would, I would say getting the money out as fast as possible is, is the top priority because as you said, we've already passed by a couple of months. June first has already come, once July first comes, e- each month it just gets, the hit gets bigger and bigger and bigger.
I'm comfortable with the, what was recommended by the staff in this, which I think provides some flexibility for us to assess after a ten-year period and then renew based on need. Is that, that's how you would most simply describe it, John?
Yes, that, that's how we have it currently worded, um, to where we, uh, determine financially, uh, that the, uh, individual cannot afford to pay it, that we just extend it another ten years. And what we're looking at, um, we have it situated in, uh, where it, just like we have the, uh, homeowners rental, I mean, homeowner, um, homeowner rehab program, uh, it's worded the same way, uh, where it's a defined loan term. But if, uh, the property transfers, uh, Uh the property transfers uh then the city has paid back its funds and uh that's how it's situated and satisfied. Uh so we're kind of sort of looking to do this exact same thing.
And I would be um just interested in an update that since we figured out a way to, and I've shared this with you before, to. Keep these um in-house, if we are able to allocate more resources to families as a result of that, if maybe. Not the entire administrative fee is used. Um so if that's something that um Chris, if you, you know. Keep an eye out on and, you know, give us a. Your thoughts about that at some point in the future, that'll just be helpful, just um, you know, with discussions moving forward.
And and I will say thus far uh with the three programs we do have, um my projected admin, it's um. It's about twenty thousand dollars lower than what it would if we would have put it out. Um just using the ten percent, which is barely enough to cover admin with a lot of nonprofits, they'll tell you that. Um ten percent is really low. Uh so we would be saving just on the first three programs about twenty six thousand dollars.
Because that money can go to the, to the families.
I just, I have one question. Um if we went forward today with the loan structure, the way it's the staff is recommending. At some point down the road. Could council choose to forgive these loans?
Yes. Um so with every loan the city council currently has. Um with our homeowner loans, they can be forgiven. Um but I will say if you start doing that, you're gonna set a precedent. And when you don't do it for one person, but do it for a bunch of other people, it's gonna be hard to argue that.
And I didn't mean to open that. I was just thinking of our house, you know, conversation, just how to be more supportive. Um for the families, especially at the lower um income levels. Because like you said, you know, there, I mean, we saw the furloughs at um UVA and the longer we're in this. Pandemic, we know that some people who are there now um earning, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, they may be laid off. But they are probably the most secure in terms of returning to work. You know, once that's over, especially in a field like that. So that person um, you know. You want to think about differently than you would think about like the air mart employee who is a homeowner who um. Was um released, it's just a different um and how long it will even take them to rebound from. Um you know, time, any amount of time not being paid. So those are the kind of. You know, thoughts that that I'm having when I say um. Like if not everyone's the same, even if everyone ends up in a similar situation um because of the pandemic pandemic.
So I think if you set it up so uh maybe as a sliding scale. So maybe zero to fifty percent AMI, it's a hundred percent forgiven after ten years. Fifty one to eighty percent is fifty percent forgiven and then eighty one and over, it's none forgiven, nothing's forgiven. If you set up like a sliding scale and it's something that everyone knows going going up front. When they're signing their documents, then um I think it's. It's okay in my book, but if it's something that's like me, this determine uh six or seven years from now and. A lot of individuals have already started repaying or um. Uh one individual gets it and another individual doesn't get it. Um that's when it becomes more of a challenge for us.
Well, maybe since that just came up, if you want to think about that and then just send us a email with um your thoughts and if um since. Um well, I guess we would have a, wouldn't have another meeting um before um this, but. Well, I don't know if he can do it. Well, if you can, I don't know, but in the.
I'll write something down. It won't, it won't, it won't have approval from the hack, but I'll write something down um and get it. And get it to you.
Oh, and that would, that wouldn't delay in any way.
No, it wouldn't.
Okay, right, okay.
Because you can still work on everything.
Right. Um yeah, just not delaying is is the biggest priority. Would these be the first mortgages the city sort of has in a like mortgage portfolio? Or do we have others?
I think these, I think these will be the first ones. Um like I said, we currently have interest in properties. Uh do the uh homeowner's rehab rehab program. Uh we have interest in a lot of properties. Um but these will be the first ones uh where we actually are making mortgage payments. And I believe these will be the first ones where we actually have loans that have a due date.
Right.
Um our home homeowner rehab, um they are deferred unless there's a transfer.
Right.
Or the individual is no longer qualified because they transferred in the family and they're no longer income qualified.
Yeah, well, and obviously, you know, I honestly don't need to tell you. That this introduces a lot of interesting uh long-term administrative questions. Uh quite a few of them, and I think it'll be really important for us as a council to. Let staff take care of some of that and 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 not meddle in it.
Uh I will say one thing I did think of while I uh was writing some of the programs was that that what that. Homeowner's mortgage assistance program is a program where um. It's not a lot of localities thinking about doing it and it's actually a program where we could potentially. Um look at opportunities where we could receive a first right or a feasible on them. Um that's not something I currently have written up. I didn't, didn't know what the support level would be on something like that. Um but going forward, that might be something we look at. Um if we have to do another round of this or another program similar to where the city can try to uh. Make some permanent or long-term affordable housing through some of these short-term goals and priorities and um. I guess putting out the fire.
Yeah.
Situations.
I I would certainly say individually, I think that is a a a good and important framework to to try and think about what. Actual policy levers we have to try to in turn guarantee more long-term affordability and. I would, I think it's, you know, obviously a lot of details, you know. Matter and all of it, but I think as a framework, I think it's, that's a positive um direction.
Okay, so if there um, we don't have any more um questions, then is um do we have a motion?
I move council adopt the resolution for allocation of the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund for Programs in Response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. For one point one five five million dollars.
Is there a second? All right, uh Ms. Thomas, could you um please take the vote?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Okay, that carries um five zero. Thank you um, Mr. Sales and um Mr. Engel. And uh Ms. Lee. Um for all of the um work here. And um hack for their review.
I will add one thing, uh the way that you uh passed it uh allows us to move the funding between the programs. What I have highlighted.
And this is also, you know, a discussion for the Kears dollars. If there's something, you know, that comes up or in future um. Allocations and we can put more money towards um programs like this, then that's um, you know, something that. Um I would plan to advocate for in the um future. All right, thank you all. And next we have the um ordinance. Back to that, that we moved from the consent agenda amendment to modify deadlines, modify public meetings, public hearing practices and procedures. To address continuity of operations associated with COVID nineteen pandemic. May be passed by a four to five vote on the first reading.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. Uh this Alex uh uh from NDS um. As you all know, on uh March twelve um. Twenty twenty uh, the city manager issued a uh declaration of emergency. And uh on March twenty fifth, uh city council enacted an ordinance on continuity of uh service. And uh within those uh uh. Ordinance and the emergency order, uh there were provisions uh indicating. Activities that staff can undertake and those uh that uh we are suspended and. Part of those that were uh restricted includes uh uh. Applications that will require public hearing, community engagement, uh uh boards and commissions, consideration. And subsequently, the city council. Um what is before you at this time, it's a a request from staff uh to uh. To allow staff to accept the applications that will not require uh. Community engagement process or public hearing or. Uh council consideration, essentially administrative review and approval of uh certain applications. Uh that's what uh before the city council uh uh tonight.
And I guess I was just confused because I thought that the emergency ordinance, a lot of it was allowing for greater timelines to surpass. And obviously, there were certain meetings that we were, we're not gonna allow. I was not clear because there's so many other departments that are continuing to operate and do a number of things that we don't get involved in that decision-making. I was just trying to understand and while the questioning was around understanding the role that council is playing in determining how many, what types of applications are and are not going to be processed. I was trying to understand why we have to be the gate here and why not staff.
Well, well, that is true, but staff cannot take unilateral uh uh steps in terms of uh. Uh violating uh uh an ordinance enacted uh by the city council. For for example, if you recall. We had to come back to the city council uh last month to request uh uh. A planning commission uh uh here. Uh certain applications that were received uh uh before or on um. Uh uh March twelfth and council did authorize uh for the planning commission and the uh to go ahead and have. Uh virtual meetings for June. And now we have to ask the city council to extend uh that particular authorization, you know, because it's only for one month. Uh so we can't uh override uh uh council enacted uh uh ordinance. We have to come back to the city council for council to make some kind of amendment to that document, so be able to do what we need to do.
I guess the question is, what can we do to provide that flexibility if that's council's desire so that every month we're not having to have this decision for planning commission? I mean, there's just, I would like to think that the staff can work through this. Like I, I I just don't want us to be the ones kind of tying your hands. To to processing the applications. Like, I believe we should be trying to do as much as we can. I I certainly understand that we want to do. Put the onus on the development community to ensure that the engagement is happening that we would so desire, but as we look ahead, this could be another year. And so I, I'm just struggling. I don't want us to be the gatekeeper for all of, I mean, I personally don't want that. So I was just trying to understand. I was very misunderstanding of. The role we were playing at this level of detail with these things until seeing this resolution.
Yeah, I think uh there are a couple of things. Um one is, we are in a new environment. We didn't have a. Um COVID nineteen uh three or four uh months ago. And secondly, um. Uh uh there is a major uh challenge uh issue that council needs to address. The the other communities may uh, they may be accepting all the applications. But there is a requirement we have in our ordinance enacted by the city council. That requires that a developer, as the, as part of the complete application, must go and have a. Community meeting with the neighborhood groups. Other communities uh uh don't have uh uh that kind of uh provision in their ordinance, uh you know. So uh that is something that the city council has to decide, you know, uh uh. Do we need to continue that? And uh how do we uh provide for transparency um? Access uh for those that are marginalized or those that don't have uh uh access and. Uh and things like that. And then here for the issue. So that's. In a nutshell, uh uh those are some of the things the city has built in into the community engagement process. That other communities don't have.
And I agree with those. I was a neighborhood leader when we were pushing for those to be part of the process and I absolutely believe that we should continue to have those even in these circumstances. But I believe that we should put that onus on the development community to take the lead and ensuring that we are reaching out, whether it's through, you know. Like traditional mail options, providing opportunities for people to see things in a printed form. Like, I just feel like there's ways that we can like work with the development community. To achieve that um. And and partner, like, I think that they have to have that kind of the, take the responsibility to ensuring and maybe it's a checklist that we provide or staff provides to say, this is. That this is what we require if you're gonna be able to accommodate this in the, in this world that we're in right now. Um but I absolutely don't want to bypass that community engagement piece. I just believe it can be done in a creative ways, even with with this current environment.
So if uh if that is uh tonight, after you vote on the ordinance and council decides uh. Uh the city authority might uh uh chime in, you know, um. Uh decides uh you're heading in that direction, uh then uh like you said, staff will. Uh go back and prove and develop some kind of checklist. Uh or some kind of uh uh. Remote uh access policy, you know, uh that um. For community engagement process that developers will have to comply with and then we can bring it to council. You know, uh uh for consideration.
And I would like to uh um for me to see that before uh the, we change the um. Vote from what we are voting on tonight. I think that's such an important part and we. We're just having the conversation when we were talking about the voucher programs, about the disparities in this community. And uh we need to ensure that any development that um continues, because even with these um. Parameters in place, we have created this unjust community. So I think it's important not just to put that on staff, but for council to know. Um what they are allowing, so there's no surprise. Uh when you get by um default, that type of community, um the gaps that we have. So I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on that without knowing what we are saying developers can count as um. Um community engagement. And we also need um to make it clear that. It's not a workaround because of COVID nineteen, that if you're saying that you can have community engagement, that we set. Um what those um limits are, so you may not be able to have just one to three um community meetings. If you have to meet the requirement, if you have to have ten, right? And if they um. Want to um, you know, meet, and I don't know what the number is, but that we ensure that there's a way for people to safely. Um you know, be present and understanding that not all people um have access to. Um the virtual world in the same way, depending on where these developments are. And so you wouldn't just necessarily be able to count on that. So I'm very uncomfortable um, you know, with that process, without knowing what what that means. And some of the communities that they've been sending in these emails that uh they are comparing us to. Um they don't even think um in terms of um equity. And so we need to make sure that we are just not um allowing um people to say, oh, other communities are doing this. And that we are still holding um to a standard that we need to improve now. Um already and that I'm hoping with all the work that we're doing, we approve upon it versus um relaxing it.
I agree. There there is an opportunity to im- improve upon our current processes as, you know, as much as certainly some people. I agree. There, there is an opportunity to im- improve upon our current processes as, you know, as much as certainly some people are not engaging in this way, even with these meetings, there, we were hearing from some groups that they've had people joining them have never come to meetings in person. And so I think there's a way to build on it.
That's true, but we have lost while, like, the county, they have increased in virtual participation. Um, we have fewer people participating, um, now than when we had open meetings. Um, so we're not.
I'm talking about boards and commissions. I wasn't talking about council, yeah.
But that's what I know that the board are supervisor, some of those members saying with land use issues, they're, they've increased, um. With the virtual meetings, that more people are, um, participating. But I'm just pointing out if that, since we've been compared to Almar County, that's not our story here, even with our council meetings. And I would just hope that we would ensure, um, that we are not relaxing those standards.
I guess my broader question, though, Mr. Blair, is like, understanding the role that council plays in any operations decision making that does not tie to COVID. Because I thought we had gotten away from that language as the governor's executive orders were being updated. I'm just trying to understand what else we're holding up, because I, it was kind of news to me that it was council was a reason for some of these types of applications not being processed. Or even the fact that we have this version in front of us tonight. I was like, we, we were holding up administrative review of new applications. I didn't digest that, I guess.
Well, as far as the, um. I'm sorry, it sounded like some background, but, um, as far as the, um. Operations versus council distinction on this question. I think it's important to, um. To think about what Mayor Walker was saying, and you're right, this, this. This certainly is an aspect of operations, right? That our ordinance states that there must be community meetings. But there is a, the policy component as well. And the policy component really is, you know, in a COVID world, um. When you have a requirement for a community meeting. What do you all, as a council, want to take a look through an equity lens? Through an engagement lens, through a, um. Vigorous public process lens, what do you all, as a council, want to see for a community meeting? And I do think that's more policy than just pure operations, because I think the last thing that you as a council or that any developer or that any citizen wants is for NDS to take this as an operational decision. Have a Zoom meeting like tonight and call that a community meeting. And then we, you know, we get all the way down through the entire process to council. And then as a council, you say, well, wait a second, that's not enough. We would have preferred more tools, more meetings, more engagement processes. Um, go back and start over. So I do think, and I want to address something in, in a minute about some of the development community's concerns. But I do think in terms of that operation policy distinction, this is an important policy. Because you don't want any developer going down the development pipeline, so to speak, only to get here. And then just have somebody, a counselor, say, well, I didn't like the community meeting, it wasn't as inclusive or as community oriented as I would like, considering we're in a virtual world.
Just really quick, but the, what's in front of us tonight was about administrative review of development applications, which didn't have any community meeting component. I'm trying to understand for what was in front of us tonight. Why that, I just am so confused about, this doesn't involve that. This is pretty standard operational thing, I, things. I'm not clear on why we're involved with this decision tonight. If you want to expand it, I can understand why we're involved.
Sure. Well, I think part of the issue tonight is just to make sure, um. That the deadline, um, waiver would still stand, even though NDS is going to, in fact, accept administrative reviews.
Okay.
Um, but I do want to go back to a point I have heard, um. And I actually talked to Mr. Ikafuna earlier this evening. Um, the idea that there is a development moratorium being placed. And there, there's a Virginia Supreme Court decision that's being cited about that development moratoriums are not permitted in Virginia. I want to make the point, this is not a development moratorium that is going on right now. This is in reaction to the COVID nineteen state of emergency declared by Governor Northam and Dr. Richardson's declaration of emergency. Um. Mr. Ikafuna and I talked, and, you know, we can amend this resolution tonight, and it has nothing to do with the community meeting. But I think his point, and I will, I will turn it over to him, was as far as new development applications. You know, tonight is purely about the administrative applications, but the other new development applications. All of those other approvals, the bar, the subdivisions, the site plans and the rezonings and S U Ps all require a community meeting. Talking to, uh, Mr. Ikafuna earlier tonight, he's fine if we accept those as a staff. Um, but I think his point, and I agree with him, is that those do require community meetings. So we can accept the applications, but until the council gives he and his staff some idea of what they want a community meeting to look like. We're merely taking applications and fees, and we're going to be waiting for council to give the go ahead on, hey, this is what we want that community meeting process to look like. Once you approve that, then, then it's, then there would be an opportunity for those applications to develop to the next steps with the community.
Okay, I guess I didn't realize that we were, that we were the bottleneck in that.
Well.
Well, uh, I don't think council is necessarily bottleneck, you know. I, I think we have a situation COVID nineteen. And, um, the, 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 there, there is, uh, some kind of, um. Uh. I don't know how to put it, but there's, uh, a recommendation or suggestion to the public, you know, uh, on social distancing. You know, and as part of that precautionary measures, you know, council had to enact an ordinance, you know, to keep staff and the workforce safe. You know, and as things are improving, you know, we are coming back, uh, to the city council as part of the reopening process. You know, uh, and phased implementation of, uh, uh, opening process. So essentially, I think that's what we are doing. I don't think council is a bottleneck. I think, uh, uh, it's a precautionary measure in terms of, uh. Incrementally reopening the, uh, our daily activities, why ensuring, uh, uh. Uh, the protection of the workforce and what have you.
Mr. Ikafuna, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, what kind of developments require a public engagement? What kind of development projects being brought forward have the public engagement requirement? Is it just S U P and P U Ds?
S U P, uh, that's correct, um, rezoning, you know, um. And major subdivisions, major site plans and things like that.
So it's not that NDS isn't accepting new applications at this time, it's just that the ones that require.
Exactly.
Community engagement have been put on hold because we cannot safely engage with the community.
Yeah, in an appropriate manner, that's correct.
We hadn't been accepting new applications prior to this, I thought. We stopped.
We haven't.
Right, any.
They're accepting them because they would have to sit on them and hold.
The only, yeah, the only applications we are accepting is a permit application, um. A building permit, plodding permit, mechanical, um. Uh, and other related applica- uh, applications.
So by, any by right application is being accepted currently?
No.
No, that's what this is about tonight.
Okay.
None of that was being accepted. But now it's saying anything administratively that can be handled within staff and doesn't include a, but that's what we're here to vote on tonight. And then the question from the development community was, can you expand that further so that we can, we can submit all applications? And obviously there's a community engagement component that needs to be ironed out here.
So at this point, this, this is to approve this ordinance so that, I, I'm just being really clear here on what I might. So it is to allow applications of by right work, by right permits, but holding on to any, but not allowing ones that require a community engagement aspect.
No, this is not by right, you know, this is, uh, minor, um, uh, minor applications that can be administratively reviewed that doesn't require public meetings, uh, or council or planning commission considerations.
That's the other question I guess I have, because I consider the community meetings with the general public. When they're going out into the community, like into the neighborhoods or, and, and versus our public meetings is different. So some of them will require the planning commission consider them, and then council to consider them, which we, we did last month. Planning commission went through and did a P U D, well, it'll come in front of us. I can see more of those things coming through that, that's not a good example, because it did require community engagement. But I wouldn't want us to stop things that aren't, don't require that, that community meeting, but still will require consideration of the planning commission and council.
Okay.
I'm just trying to, trying to just make this as flexible as possible.
Could I, could I make one suggestion? Would it be perhaps, um. At your July the twentieth meeting, um. NDS and our office can kind of work on different options to present for you. And, and maybe even a, a proposed idea about community meetings. Um, what, what that would look like in a COVID nineteen age.
I, for one, would appreciate that. I've been listening to all of this and trying to figure out. Uh, for why we want to have a system that, uh, basically shuts down a lot of development activity. If there is any possible way to be fair to everybody and still let everything, and still let the ordinary course of government happen. Uh, one of the things that strikes me is that our, our model engagement in these, in these circumstances is really procedural. We say you must put notices out, you must have a meeting, this kind of thing. It doesn't say, you, it doesn't really have us evaluating how many people came forward or how many people responded or joined in this Zoom meeting or that Zoom meeting. And, um. Particularly with some of the discussion about Gee Albemarle seems to be having better community involvement than we're having. That kind of puts us in a position of trying to assess, uh, and perhaps trying to assess after the fact whether a particular level of community engagement or particular effort, a particular procedure was substantively sufficient. And that's a tough thing to do. All we can really do, it seems to me, is to figure out some way to require enough per different procedures so that there is a reasonable prospect of getting a, a, a sufficient sample. We've got to figure that out in a, in this COVID nineteen world, and as somebody noted, may well be with us for a year or more. And we can't just put all rezonings and all other actions on hold. Uh, not technically a moratorium, of course, but effectively, that's what's going on. Um, and we can't, we just, we just can't do that, uh, for that long a period of time. If it was truly only two or three months as it has now been, that's one thing. But we're talking in possibly a year or more, and I, I'd, I'd like to find a way around that.
Okay, and, and again, I, and for Mr. Ikafuna, I, I don't think, you know, we had this conversation earlier tonight. Right now, I think his opinion, you know, based on our talk, is that no one on staff's health would be compromised if we accepted these other new development applications. But this is. You know, it, it didn't sound like there's any real problem with just accepting them. But, but I think the real question is, again. To the mayor's point, to Counselor Snook's point, and other counselors. Staff can take a look at those, they can start to evaluate, but until there is a policy of some sort that council feels comfortable moving forward with community meetings. I don't think those, those applications will get any further than through the door. But, but Mr. Ikafuna, I mean, do you have any objections if, just to accept the applications? Not moving to the community meeting, but just to accept them at this.
Well, we can, um. We don't, uh, we can accept the applications with the money and then, uh, uh, put it on hold until we walk out, uh, some kind of a practical, uh, community engagement process that, uh, council can live with. And everybody.
My question is from a time that an application is submitted to, gets to the community meeting, there is still some back and forth with staff and the applicant. There's work that can be done, that can make progress on while we're figuring all of this out. I would just hate for everything to be at a standstill. Knowing that we're going to have the expectation that maybe our second July meeting or, or only a July meeting.
Yeah, I think so, uh, uh, actually, uh, um, uh, developers can, they, uh, uh. They're probably talking to staff right now. They can start talking to staff, discussing the project, you know. So by the time you work things out, uh, uh, they'll be ready to go. Uh, so they're, they're at liberty, you know, to talk with staff. And the staff, uh, also, uh, is currently doing like reconstruction, you know, um, uh, uh, video conferencing, conferencing with developers, so they can do that. And then by the time, uh, they're ready to submit the application, they have a pretty well thought out application, uh, to submit.
Because the only, the other piece I was saying, my other, when I'm looking at the, um, ordinance amendment. The, one of the paragraphs, the review of development applications must not require any action by council or the planning commissioner, bar, or borders owning appeals. I don't, that's different than does not require a community meeting. I, if it, if.
Yeah, that means, what it means, that's why it's administrative. It's not going to come to council. Staff is going to review it, and if everything is in order, signs off on it, off of, uh, that application. It's not going to come to council, it's not going, go, going to the planning commission.
And that's where I think that if it's not requiring a community meeting, because it's one of these other many things, but it does require planning commission or council, I would think we would be okay with moving forward with those. Because we are, we are hosting commu- planning commission meetings, we're hosting council meetings. But where we, where we, where we aren't so solid yet is the community meetings and what those requirements look like. Right?
Yeah, well, yeah, the reason why we are doing this because it's a new application. That's why we are doing the ordinance tonight.
Okay.
Because it's new application. The, the, um, ordinance that was enacted, enacted by the city council on March twenty fifth excludes, uh, um, acceptance of new application, but this will be a new application. So, um, if, uh, council adopts this tonight, uh, we start accepting applications that can be administratively reviewed and approved.
But what about the other applications, even though we can't get to the community meeting part, I guess? I'm just. Are we going to do another version of this then?
Well, I, I, I think, uh, the city attorney, Mr. Blair, just indicated, uh, uh, we had a discussion, uh, uh, before the council meeting. Uh, about if we accept the applications, you know, uh, we can put them on hold until we can walk out, uh, uh. you know, uh, we can put them on hold until we can walk out, uh, some kind of a practical community engagement or neighborhood meeting process that everybody can live with. And then we take it to council, council approves it like the mayor said earlier. Then we are, uh, back in full operation at that point.
Okay. And the only.
But I would just say, look at the emails that we have received and the intensity behind them. If people think that their applications are just sitting in N D S and they're not being worked on the way they think they should, while they are waiting on us to vote on the process, um, of approval, that's going to create, um, more of this dynamic where it's going straight to the staff before we've even had the chance to, um, make a decision about what we, um, deem as appropriate, um, attempts at community engagement during this time. I just think that could get really messy.
And I'm not even, like, the ones that are community meeting related, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to separate, there's a lot of other decisions that don't require community meetings because Alex listed off the few that are specifically requiring that community meeting. But there are other new applications that could come in that might require planning commission and council involvement, but not a community meeting. I'm just trying to understand where do those fall into this? Can we not accept those applications and let them continue to move forward and get those decisions made? And are we really gonna, we're proving every month the planning commission meets? Should we just say blatantly that we're saying we're okay with the planning commission convening as deemed necessary to keep these things moving?
I thought.
I thought we had too. I'm just confused.
Yeah, well, it was for June. You get, uh, the city council authorized.
Commission was in perpetuity.
No man.
Okay.
No, but you could do that tonight if you wanted to authorize a monthly planning commission meeting.
Well, they're supposed to meet in July and some of us have said we're joining them, so this is the last time we're gonna meet between now, so I want to know if I should show up.
Yeah, council has to vote. We are ready to go for July planning commission meeting. And the council needs to authorize that we have that meeting in July. Or you can lift, uh, you can lift the restriction that, uh, they can continue to have the meetings, uh, as it was before, um, COVID nineteen. You know, so we still have to need the city council authorization for the meeting next month because we are ready to go.
Well, I, I for one thing, I'm in favor of us authorizing the July meeting.
So am I.
I thought it was already done deal.
Planning on being there.
Yeah, I was planning on being. I don't, I guess, uh, we should authorize it.
And I think authorizing, I mean, when we know that those meetings, if they are, you know, can meet in a safe space and we are ensuring that we're not that, you know, bypassing, um, you know, any process that keeps the community in form and we're not putting staff, um, health and safety at risk, then I think those were the reasons why this was even brought before us to vote on in the first place. And so if, um, we're not doing those things, then I don't think anyone has an issue with it, but we don't want to compromise any of those things, or at least I don't.
No, I totally agree. I agree. So Mr. Blair, should we first auth- formally authorize that meeting?
Yes, if somebody wants to make a resolution to authorize the July planning commission meeting.
I move to authorize the July planning commission meeting.
Do we have to do it one month at a time?
Oh, and the bar, and to do all these, can we do it? I mean, yeah.
Yes, and the B A, and B A, that's correct.
Can we authorize them for more than a month? I mean.
You, you.
That's up to council.
Yes.
I don't have the vote, council.
I just know we're gonna be back at this point the next time we meet.
I'm interested in, from a public health perspective, there's this July, August potential peak date. And I just.
But no one's meeting in person.
It doesn't matter whether people are dying or potentially the community stressed out. I think we still, there are so many other factors to consider when you're talking about a community suffer from a public health crisis. So I would want to ensure that, um, because we are still in the very beginning stages of this, this just started in March, so we don't have a long history with it and we don't have a lot of knowledge about it. And so, um, since that seems to escape people at times, I would hope that, um, we don't, um, put things in place where even if there are people are able to meet, like even if we are able to meet virtually, that doesn't mean that our constituents, the people we are here to serve are able to pay attention if we are in, um, a very difficult situation.
I would like to suggest that we at least authorize the July and August meetings because our next July meeting, our next July meeting is not until about three weeks before the August planning commission meeting. And if the planning commission is going to make any kind of normal progress on things, they've got to be able to set their agenda. So I think we at least need to take it for the next two months.
Now, I understand that and, um, but because what we did in March, when we had the emergency ordinance, we could have the same thing and we would have to potentially shut everything down if we are in that level of a crisis, correct, Mr. Blair?
Yes, I mean, I think that's, that's a fair point, but, um, you know, I, I think, again, that's, that's determin- I think that the determinant factor there is the actual health. How COVID is spreading or not.
Yeah, okay. And that's all I want us to make sure that we are paying attention to.
Okay, so I move that we allow for the planning commission, the B A R and the zone of appeals. Board of zoning appeals to meet in July and August as needed.
I would second that motion.
Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote please?
And have we included any other boards in that? I know that the CRB.
And the tree commission as well asked for the story.
Was that a July meeting?
I.
Yes.
I, I can amend it to include the July meeting of the tree commission and all meetings that are desired by the CRB. I mean, what do you want to do? The initial meeting of CRB, I thought we already proved this, but.
So the meetings, I think, whatever the list was that we approved before, we probably should just approve that list, right, Mr. Blair?
That's what I was going to suggest. Um, perhaps approving the boards and commissions you already approved in earlier for meeting electronically for the neck, for both July and August. And I do think, uh, Mr. Yeah.
Gotta add the tree command.
The tree.
List, Heather?
In front of me?
I, I just have a question for council. The, the planning commission, uh, in approving their meetings for for, uh, July and August, uh, I guess this may be for Mr. Blair as well. Would that include, uh, work sessions like? Usually a planning commission, sometimes from time to time, they have work sessions. Was that, would that include, uh, some kind of work session as well or just a regular meeting?
I think it would be dependent on the wording of the resolution. I think it could state, you know, to, that the council can make a resolution that says that we hereby approve the previously, the, um, boards and commissions that were previously approved to meet electronically can meet in July and August as needed. And the as needed language would include if there needed to be a work session.
All right, that walks. And the motion was as needed.
And there's also a request from Sister Cities Commission.
And the argument there, just to sort of recap, is that they're having such a large turnover that the outgoing members would like to be able to meet one time to, so get the incoming members up to speed and, and, and so on before they shuffle off, so. That's, that's part of their rationale. I had earlier put that request in and basically asked, uh, Mr. Wheeler, uh, whether that would be doable within their schedule. And I, I didn't hear a response. I think that's the sort of thing that would be relatively less important in the greater scheme of how the city government works, but it would be important to them if it could be worked out with the staff.
So we can give approval and then, then staff working with them can determine when the capacity will allow for those?
That's my suggestion.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we are approving the meeting of all the boards and commissions that we previously approved to meet in July and August as needed. And in addition, the tree commission and Sister Cities Commission may meet one time as staff is available to accommodate.
I would second that motion. Well, one final question, did that initial list include the CRB? I thought it did, but it's.
Yes.
Okay.
And can I add, um, also Kakidemic, uh, did ask if the community policy and management team could meet as well remotely?
I see no issue with that.
So I'll amend my motion to include them to go along with the Sister Cities and Tree Commission as staff is able to accommodate one time over the next two months.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second the amended motion.
Okay, Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
And now if there's no, there are no further questions, we need a motion on this ordinance, proposed ordinance.
I move that we accept the amendment to ordinance to modify deadlines, modify public meetings and public hearing practices and procedures to address continuity of operations associated with the pandemic disaster.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Anybody saying?
For just the amendment as it is?
Yes.
In, in the packet, what would be the alternative to?
We just talked staff as opposed to get us information by the next meeting to consider, um.
We could have the language just be to accept all applications, knowing that we are not going to proceed with community meetings until that is resolved. Is that an alternative?
Creates a headache for staff without us, um, chiming in, we had, but.
Is that what you had suggested earlier, Mr. Blair?
Well, what the ordinance before you is to accept applications that do not require the community meeting. So the administrative approvals, but as stated, Mr. Ikafuna and I did meet earlier today and talked about this and he stated that, um, the applications could, could be accepted at this point for the other types of, um, other types of, uh, development, new development applications. But again, without the community meeting, it, it's gonna stop there in effect. And I think the one possibility is to come back, you, you could authorize to accept the applications now for new development, just to accept them. But in July, the council would need to give N D S some guidance on this community meeting process. And, and I do want to, to councillor Hill, to your point, I think it's important to note that even a rezoning does require a community meeting. Even though it goes to the planning commission and council, before it gets to that stage, there is a ordinance requirement for a community meet.
I was just trying to think of those new applications that come in for redevelopment, for developments that actually don't require a community meeting, might only need to go to planning commission, maybe they don't even come to us. I just feel there's a lot of stuff that comes through that doesn't require that me- meeting that might require a planning commission action. So that's why I'm kind of hung up on that one paragraph saying that anything that requires any of these bodies to make a decision are, do not, are, are gonna be included, must not require any action by, by any of these bodies. And I'm like, I just feel like that's really putting everything into the same bucket.
Can anybody give me an example of something that goes to the planning commission but doesn't have a community engagement component? I mean, this is just for my own, this is my, probably my biggest weakness in, in public service, so.
Wouldn't a by right development that has a site plan component to it, that's go to this planning commission for approval?
No.
There's still a community meeting.
Even if they're not rezoning or S U P or P U D? Okay.
Is that right, Alex? That, that still the major site plans have to have a community?
Yeah, major site plans, they consult with, uh, the community.
But again, I mean, I, what I would say is that, um, looking at the ordinance, um, this is about development applications for the administrative approval without the community meeting. Council could pass this ordinance and then it could just by motion ask that N D S in the, um, next month, start to accept applications, but it doesn't go any further than that in terms of, we would come back in, at your July twentieth meeting with ideas for community engagement and how to what the council's preference is at that point.
So effectively, all we would be doing by that would be to say, you can go ahead and take the applications between now and July twentieth and in July twentieth, we'll figure, by July twentieth, uh, we will tell you more specifically what can happen with those now accepted applications.
But aren't there time limits that we're, the review process?
Well, the ordinance has waived that.
Yeah, so this wouldn't start though, okay.
No man.
I I would not have opposition to that approach.
Okay, sounds fine. So Cena's motion then holds then. And we're just gonna make another motion after that.
Right.
Fine.
Second.
All right, any clarifying questions? No, Ms. Thomas, could you, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
And then we just want a motion that we are directing Neighborhood Development Services to accept all applications.
New development.
New development applications.
In terms of just the acceptance.
Accept them, yes. Do I leave it at that or I talk more?
And I would just say.
Right? And.
I'll leave it at that.
All right, is there a second?
Second?
If we, if we accept it, we don't have to process it until after July twenty yet, right?
Yes, and after you all bring back, um, options for us to vote on.
All right, okay.
Okay, Mr. Payne?
I'm interested in hearing about the, um, you know, because I know that the development community that they are watching, just how this is gonna translate to them. So if there's, um, you know, a push for staff to do something, I mean, those will be some of the questions I would want to know if this. So if there's, you know, a push for staff to do something, I mean, those will be some of the questions I would want to know if this type of process works, or if everyone fully understands what, you know, has been approved and doesn't try to make it something else. Any other questions, comments from council? All right, Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
That carries five votes too. All right, and next we have on the agenda, the any other business? Nope. All right. Is there a Mr. Blair?
I was.
We do, we have that one motion, right? Right? I'll get it out.
What is it?
I have it. We discussed this.
Oh.
Email that came in.
Are we wanting to go ahead and just make the motion or are we going to introduce it or no? Um, I move that pursuant to Charlottesville City Code Section 2-213D, city attorney's office is authorized to retain taxing authority consulting services.
I second the motion.
Um, any clarifying questions? Do we want to explain to the public what we are retaining them for?
Um, this will be related to a suit concerning the business business professional occupancy license tax.
Any other questions? All right. Was there a second? Yes.
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 Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Any other business?
Anything we need to do, we have five weeks, people.
And now we have our closing matters by the public?
If you want to speak to council, click the raise your hand icon in the webinar. And we'll call on you in the order in which your hands go up. First up is Brandon Collins. Brandon, you're on with council, you've got three minutes.
Hey, uh, hey, Brandon Collins, I live in Charlottesville and work for FAR. Before I get too grumpy with y'all, I do want to say, I think y'all are doing your best there and I really appreciate your ability to handle Zoom fatigue here after being, spending hours and hours, uh, probably even before your meeting tonight, uh, online. I am still very disappointed. So I, I've spent the last few weeks trying to learn about the Corona relief funds from the CARES Act, the CRF funds. And it's been a big puzzle what the state was going to do for it. And I'm just, I'm very disappointed that city government didn't reach out to a whole lot more people about the CRF funds. And disappointed in the lack of coordination over the use of those funds. I do hope over the next three days, y'all can give some serious thought to reorganizing that money. I think as you looked at the C-Srap program and as you looked at the programs being presented by Mr. Sales, you all acknowledged that there just isn't enough resources to go around. But I think you're missing a, a big, a big chance to, to really make an impact on, on a looming housing crisis. We, we already had a housing crisis. It's going to get bad and certainly you can do better than 16% of the CRF that just came in. It's the last big chunk of money that you can rely on right now. There are some things maybe in the future. But particularly the Emergency Rent Relief and Rental Market Stabilization Act, that's in the new HEROES Act. That's a big if. And certainly if that does get passed, it's, it's way down the line. That could be a big help to this community as well, but um, the tiny bits of money you're putting into dealing with an emergency housing situation. I think you can do better and I think you can squeeze out 200,000, 400,000 some more dollars for, for rent relief, in particular rent relief for private housing out of that CRF fund. The, the tiny bits that you're getting from the CAF just isn't going to have an impact. It's going to impact a couple of folks. It's going to go right out the door immediately. And you know, this entire community is not going to be served. If you put some more of that CRF money into housing, and I think that's more appropriate than for business development. Certainly maybe juggling out those numbers a little better. Maybe you can take a look at what's needed by the city. Um, when 50% of that CRF seems to be going to city government for one way or another. Certainly I think you can do better. I really, really encourage city government to coordinate with housing providers and advocates on the use of these monies. The CDBG CV funding process got messed up, in my opinion, due to lack of coordination. That's money that could go right into rent relief if we did it right, but unfortunately went out to a competitive process and we don't know where that money is going to land. And if it's going to be best used by whoever gets it, so. A whole lot more can be, be done, so thank you.
Mayor Walker, we have three other hands raised right now. Next up is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on with council, you have three minutes.
I just want to say first off, the comments about trusting the police chief. Look, I can't stress this enough, I don't care who don't like it. She has lied multiple times. She's not only lied on community members, she's lied on the Commonwealth attorney, Joe Platania. And maybe you trust her because she hasn't lied on you. But it's mighty funny that we pick and choose who we want to protect downtown. I can't, I can't write for that, I just can't, I, I can't. The police has never been beneficial to people of color. And your family not the only family that has suffered from going to jail. My sister was, was, was also a victim of that, along with cousins and some more people. I think we all come from that background when you don't grew up in certain neighborhoods in Charlottesville. The fact that she doesn't allow her officers to communicate outside of the department with community members who want to find solutions is unacceptable. And you yourself, mayor, say you didn't want no part of it. This is unacceptable.
Tanisha, your behavior.
My three minutes ain't up.
It's not what I'm going to tell you since you made a statement.
What may not be a proper solution for you, what may not be a proper solution for you may be a solution for somebody else that's affected by the system. Because you or I haven't done that time before. You or I aren't still dealing with being profiled like some of these people are in Hardy Drive, 12th Street and everywhere else. Garrett, Prospect, Sixth Street. So you have to find solutions. So if y'all not willing to sit at the table with people that want to find solutions, officers that's willing to publicly find solutions and talk to community members, and she tell them that they can't. She restrict people from talking to certain people. Then she sit in the office with the city manager, myself and Jeff Fogel, and say what she not going to do. But you trust her. But you trust her. As nobody else, but you trust her. You heard what I said. Uh, y'all pick and choose. I'm done.
That I referenced and I had my family on the phone, your sister was on that case. So I, again, I would not put your sister or your family in any situation that I wouldn't put mine in. You know, you need to check yourself and your intentions behind while you're doing this. And we can have that conversation publicly or privately, but you're not going to keep talking to me in this manner.
I believe I can say what I want to say, I'm grown. Right, I can say what I want to say, I'm 38. I ain't nobody, child, I'm grown. I'm gonna say what I want to say, whether you like it or not. I'm not going to pick and choose with you when you wrong. You wrong. You can't keep protecting her. She fucked up, point blank, period. Period. And you can't fix that.
In lunch, but because you had an issue with Dr. Richardson, you brought her into the equation. And I'm just asking you to look at your behaviors. And that's it. That's what this conversation is about, Tanisha. And so if, when you are really only seeking solutions, which is not your motive, then we will get somewhere. Right now you're being Patty and you know that.
How you gonna say what my solutions are? You don't even want to be a part of the solution. You don't even want to be part of the solution. I got your email, mayor. You say you didn't want no parts of it. I got it, Andrea got it. You never responded.
With you. And I'm not, and I told you, one of my colleagues might want to sit in, but I am not participating in anything that you do. Yes, I did say that.
Exactly, but you, but you so far solutions though, you so far solutions though. You only for solutions when it benefits you. You only for solutions when it benefits you. I'm done, goodbye, good night, good night.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, we have two other people. Next up is Don Gathers. Don, you're on with city council, you've got three minutes.
We can't hear you, Mr. Gathers. Is he on?
He said, give him one second.
Okay, there we go, is that better?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. As you all know, I submitted street renaming request today to rename a portion of Market Street, stretching from Market Street Park down to Ninth Street Northeast. And I just hope that you all will consider that.
Yeah, we have received a couple of those requests from Ms. Anderson, Ms. Hudson and you, I don't, I may have missed some because we were getting a ton of emails, but that's definitely something that we do that we do have in and Mr. Blair, what's the next step in that process?
Is there an opportunity for community input on that?
Yeah, that's why I'm just asking her, what's the next step in those process? I think you all came with the same recommendation. I think it was just different, maybe different locations. And I don't have it to memory, but it was the same name.
Okay, well, I'd be happy to discuss it with, with you or any of the other counselors who may want to or need to.
Mayor Walker, dance and, and Mr. Gathers, if, if you're not done, let me know and, and.
No, go right ahead, Mr. Blair.
Oh, okay. Mayor Walker, the, per your, per the council's policy, I believe it was from '06, for honorary street namings, the the next step would be for council to indicate to the city manager if a majority of you would favor this coming on to a future agenda. And then the, the NDS department and Public Works would present you, I think, with the logistics of that request.
So I definitely would, you know, look, support that and, you know, hear more information from NDS about what our options were for that, for an honorary street name.
And again, Mayor Walker, that was just a portion of, of Market Street, not the full length of the, the road itself, but just from, I believe it's Northeast First Street down to Northeast Ninth Street.
And I don't remember, do you all remember whether all three applications had the, they didn't have the same street?
No, I was going to pull it up, but.
Yeah, one was, I think.
I have Ms. Anderson's up right now. And that was, the street name was Seventh, was Market and Seventh, between Market and Seventh is what she was proposing for Black Lives Matter. Again, same, and I did not receive a, a third request.
Yeah, there was one from Ms. Hudson. I have to. I think it was Main Street, Dr. Richardson, do you remember? We were talking about it.
Yes, that is correct, she did submit one. As far as the street that she was talking about, I would have to go back and look for it. Like I said, we got bombarded with so many emails and I apologize for that, but I know it was Mr. Gathers, Ms. Anderson and Ms. Hudson.
Okay, so we could just have staff look at all the three, make recommend, a recommendation based on the applications, right? And then in terms of community, if anyone else sent anything in in between then?
Would it be a July meeting? Or just some, a future date?
Yeah, after the break.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would also need a copy of the request from Ms. Hudson for our records.
Yeah, I don't have it either.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, city counselors and, and Mr. Richardson, Dr. Richardson, excuse me.
Thank you. All right, is there somebody else?
Mayor Walker, next is Rory Stolzenberg. Rory, you're on with council, you have three minutes.
Good evening again, Mayor Walker, counselors, Dr. Richardson and Chief Brackney. First off, I got to be honest, I was a little distracted from the C-Srap and CAF discussions tonight, which actually seemed pretty important. Let's go back and watch those. On that, I'll just say, I hope there will eventually be a work session between planning commission and council and the consultants to talk about the real housing issues, which seem more important than the things we do have joint sessions for, like the SADM. And at least a heads up for commissioners to go watch the video when important reports come up on council agendas. Um, but anyway, the thing I'm distracted by, earlier Chief Brackney told us that state troopers hadn't driven city vehicles or come by the dudens to the city yard. After public comment earlier, I sent you all an email that I hope you guys can pull up, I'll stall you a little for time. It has 16 images from a set of 38 photographs and a screenshot, all taken by myself from Saturday. The first set from my trip to Boto's shows a three-vehicle convoy of a VSP squad car and two trucks with CPD markings, all driven by state troopers wearing VSP's insignia visible in the photo. The second and third sets show a convoy of at least five state police squad cars and three buses of state troopers arriving in the afternoon, then disembarking and gearing up a few minutes after the protest started at 6:15. Those troopers were later spotted by a UBA surgeon in trucks driving in the direction of JPJ dressed in riot gear. A screenshot and a photo also confirm what Mr. Slocombe said, showing the single-engine plane flying over us was a VSP-operated Cessna Turbo Stationer 206 purchased on April 22nd, 2020. Now, I can take the reply to my questions earlier as one of three things. It could be a simple mistake, I know public comment can put people in the spot, it's easy to make an error. Number two, maybe CPD, and this is maybe the really, the most worrying thing of all, that the Charlottesville police aren't privy to what the state police are planning and their aspects of the joint command and use of our city facilities? And this time, I'll choose not to believe option three. I look forward to hearing more from the city, preferably now, and in the absence of reply, ask you to consider this a verbal FOIA under Section 2.23700 at Sec of the, of the Virginia Code for all city documents associated with state troopers' presence on Saturday. Thank you.
And I do see the pictures and I am interested if, because I can't see if there's a way for you to send us these where we can see. if there's a way for you to send us these where we can see um into like the city um vehicles. Um do. Can other people see these pictures?
Uh yeah, absolutely, I posted them also on Twitter, and uh you can see in the email, there's a link to the full albums, which should have the full high-res pictures. Uh but you can clearly see on those the driver of those vehicles arms that you can that they are state troopers. Um so under each set of photos, there's a link uh that should bring you to an album. And from there, if you right-click and open image in new tab, that'll be the full res.
Okay. And um so I don't think Chief Brackney is still on here, but Dr. Richardson, this um you know, this is problematic um if this if we did not know that it was happening or if there was a, you know, if something if they were actually in the vehicles or driving the vehicles or using um our spaces and we were not um, you know, aware of the of that.
I'm not aware of that because John Blair and I were handling uh, you know, um other aspects of the day during uh the event on Saturday. We were here at City Hall. So I'll have Chief Brackney uh be able to provide you uh with more information pertaining to that uh at a later time uh at this meeting.
And this state trooper, then they look like they're at the light, so what Rory is saying is that they came out of the city yard?
That was where they probably did their uh briefing. Um if that is the case, uh I haven't pulled it up yet to have a uh look at that.
But wouldn't someone, so this is back to um like the um incident over um in the Dyne Street area last summer where the. Huh?
With Jade?
Yeah, like we should know, we had that discussion then, the state police shouldn't be be here without um our our permission um or planning permission, and if they are, I mean, that's a problem.
And that's what I said, Chief Brackney can answer uh those questions, um I wouldn't have that information.
I'm sorry, I just, I thought Chief Brackney said that the city yard was the staging area for the joint.
When you say joint, that's uh not where the joint command, that's not a unified uh commands uh center there.
Okay, I I for some reason, I thought she mentioned the city yard at one point. I.
So yeah, again, we the issues that have been going on and um other places um in the state and outside of the state. Um if there is a significant um police presence in the area, like I um stated when Chief Brackney was on here, I contacted her because someone sent me a message to say that um they saw about thirty um state troopers headed into town or, you know, and it sounded like they were on, I mean, read as if they were on sixty-four um at the time, so I asked, you know, because I wanted to know were we expecting something that we hadn't been updated on um uh you know, at that time. All right, any other um so we'll and I guess just, you know, for that, that is something that we should, if you could send us an update um you know, tomorrow for the questions that we are gonna get from the public, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I note that Rory just sent us another picture that clearly shows somebody in the Virginia State Police uniform in the passenger seat of a Charlottesville PD vehicle. You can't tell if there's, actually, it doesn't even show Charlottesville PD, but certainly Charlottesville. Uh can't tell if that means that somebody with the state police was driving the vehicle. But I I definitely would be curious to know what all of the relationships are and what was going on. I mean, I did, I I suspect that the answer is that they were, they'd sent up a whole bunch of people here prepared in case they thought things were gonna go bad. Uh in which case, it would be very distressing if if our folks didn't even know that was happening.
Well, they clearly had to know if they're in one of our cars, so somebody.
Right, you think.
So. That um. Yeah, so. That's a problem.
And the state trooper is actually in the driver's seat, the passenger seat is empty.
Mayor Walker, Rory has his hand up again, if you want to entertain.
No, I think we have the um information.
That um no other hands are raised at this time.
All right.